I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge.
You can't hear you.
It's not on, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman David Broussard, but he's not here yet, so.
Step up.
Pop it, Rick.
We'll say the large prayer. We all bow our heads. Amen to Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Amen.
God will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our labor, give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have sinned against us first, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Everybody please face the flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Morcott, here. Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Great, thank y'all. If the council doesn't mind, I'd like to bring up the principal and head coach for Westgate. They're on the item on the agenda. They were like the last item on the agenda, and after that performance, I hated to make them wait. So, we just wanted to get you here and to congratulate you, as all of us. We're all so proud of what the kids accomplished, what you as the principal, you as the coach accomplished. It's just, you know, you put us on the map. It's a wonderful thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for letting us be here today. This is so exciting and actually so overwhelming. I always say it's hats off to Coach Antoine. He's done a phenomenal job with the program in the 10 years that he's been the head coach. But obviously, if you watched any part of that game, those boys on the field. I watched it again last night and was nervous watching it, even though I knew the outcome. So, it was just such an exciting thing to watch and see. And so, it definitely has brought a lot of, obviously, a lot of pride to our school. And it has been awesome to see the community reaching out and supporting the players. And that's what it's all about. It's the kids, that's our youth. And the best way to turn our city around and bring positive is to invest in the youth. So, thank you to everyone who has reached out and done anything to support us in this journey.
Piggybacking kind of on what Ms. Moore said, just thank you guys for having us. Amazing job. It wasn't me at all, it was all God, to be honest with you. If you look at what happened, first and go on the one yard line, you know, that's what it's about. You know, if our kids believe in what we try to preach, our kids believe in our program. We have some amazing kids in this community. You know, sometimes they might get a blackout on outside of town, let's be honest about it. But these kids play their butts off. These kids do well in the classroom. These kids go to school and excel, you know. So, we're just so happy for what our kids been doing, you know, so happy for our community as well. And, you know, just plan on doing it again. So, just thank you guys for having us.
All right.
Great. And I have a key to the city. These are our new and improved keys, because our last ones were about this big.
One second, Mr. Mayor. We have also Deidre Latulas. That's the kid that made the one-handed catch in end zone.
That's it.
He also has a 4.0 grade point average as well, so.
How y'all guys doing? I'm Deidre Latulas.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, I would like to just introduce myself a little bit. I go to Westgate High School. You know, I know you know I know that. 4.0 student, I just like to model, you know, Westgate High School. You know, let you guys know that there's some good in New Iberia and that it started at Westgate High School.
Sure, we know that. Thank you. Congratulations. I have, I just have to bring three, so. I have three keys to the city, so I'd just like to present you with them.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations. Good job.
All right, and you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome too, but it might be a long one.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right.
You want a picture?
Oh, that would've been nice.
I think he missed the picture.
Item one is public comment. All of our public comment, when it happens that it's all that you fill a card out, but we have a public comment time, we reserve it for the public comment time. So, that'll just be a little bit later in the meeting. But believe me, we'll hear from everyone in that public comment time. You really don't need to have a card. Those are for everything else that would be on the agenda. But since everybody's on the noise ordinance, I will call for public comment at that time. Madam Clerk, item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of December 7th, 2021, which will publish on December 22nd, 2021.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee. Is there any discussion on our December 7th meeting minutes? Hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item three A, Madam Clerk.
Michael Bell, Eula Williams, and Deborah Mitchell to address the council and present Coach Robert Paul with the Felicity Humanitarian Historical Society Award.
Thanks again for allowing us to be here. First, I want to say, tell you a brief story on Felicity. Felicity was a black woman, was a slave owned by the Depurier family, who gave the land grant to New Iberia. In 1835, New Iberia had a yellow fever epidemic. Half of the population had died. This old woman went door to door healing the sick and burying the dead, arranging for their funeral. And never before in the history of New Iberia, every man, woman, and child in every business shut their doors and went to her gravesite. She's buried at St. Peter's Cemetery. And we all should know this, because it was nothing but love that she had for the city of New Iberia. Like I said, the day of her burial, every man, woman, and child in every business shut down. Never before in history, you have dignitaries that's buried in that graveyard. But for an old slave woman that did so much, that had to lease, who did the most for the city, that happened. So, that's why I'm honoring Mr. Robert Paul. Some of the people that we honored was Mr. Pierre Swing, that kept his business in the western area. The plumbing place, Mr. Walet.
Walet.
Dr. Diggs. So, it's not a black thing, it's an Iberian thing. And I love the city that I live in, so that's why I'm doing what I'm doing. And I choose to live here. I stayed away for a long time in California, but I came back home, because I find there's no better city than the city of New Iberia. And we have to learn that we are one race, the human race. And we must remember that, people, please. And Mr. Robert Paul, even though I didn't play on his team, he used to beat us maybe once in a while, but I still love us. I played with number six, who was Mr. Yankee, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Moore, Mr. Hill, and all these people are gone. And I said, you know, I want to do this while I'm still breathing. And Mr. Robert Paul is still breathing. And I want to thank you personally. During that era, people, this was segregation, you know, so we had to do our own thing. These men got together and organized a Sheriff's League baseball, which was a hardball team. And New Iberia had about four. And every Friday or the weekend, the western park was full with people coming and joining us to play baseball. But we wasn't just taught baseball. We were taught morals, values, ethics, and unity. And these guys, Mr. Robert Paul, which happened to be a Korean veteran that served his country, and by the way, he have three players in the back, would y'all please stand up and acknowledge? Don't be saying. All right. And we are product of the western, so everything is not bad in the western. We are good people. And I want to thank you, Mr. Robert Paul, very much. And I would like the two councilmen. I chose those two councilmen because, people, that was the district that we played. And I want to thank you guys for coming and appreciating. And just remember Felicity. And if you get a chance, please go by her gravesite. She's buried at that era now, at the foot of our master, Dr. Frederick Depurier. And she shouldn't be forgotten, because the people of that area said, that time, her name should not go into oblivion. And we shouldn't let that happen. Thank y'all so much.
How you doing, Mr. Paul? So, on behalf of the city of New Iberia and the Felicity Award, we have this plaque. The plaque is dedicated to Coach Robert Paul, a U.S. veteran who devoted his time and his knowledge to the black youth in this area through baseball with love, caring, and knowing who we are. Thank you. Felicity Humanitarian Society 10th Annual Award. Thank you for all you did for the children in this community. You want to say anything, Mr. Paul?
Huh?
You want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Y'all take a picture, Ms. DeeDee.
Say something.
Erin, you want to take a picture? Take their picture.
This is some other player.
Oh, wonderful.
Not knowing that we have three. And I did 32 years, four months, and 25 days in military.
Thank you, sir. Good stuff. All right, Madam Clerk. Item four A.
Public hearing for ordinance number 2021-21, and ordinance amending sections 58, 66, and 58, 69 of District Two, I'm sorry, of Division Two of Article Three of Chapter 58 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia, relative to unnecessary noise.
Do we have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, and a second on this end, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Okay, we're gonna, is there anybody here who wants to speak on this item? Good. Then I would ask you to come up one at a time, and you have three minutes. Introduce yourself and speak on this item. Right. And there's no back and forth, we just listen to y'all.
My name's Ben Trumbull. I live at 1312 Fulton Street. Noise is unbelievable with the music. Got to screw things down to our walls. I take care of my poor mother that's with hospice. Hospice nurses come, they hear the music. Call the law, the law don't do nothing. So, why is our money being paid when they're not doing nothing? I got a mom, I love my mom. I don't know about all of y'all. My momma's in hospice. I don't want nothing bad to happen to her. Person at 1302 Fulton Street doesn't care. You got people at 1303, they brought home two weeks ago from the hospital, they're in their 80s. My momma's damn near dead where she's at. But we still got to put up with it and hear it. I can't believe this is what's happening in our town. Yeah, I left just like this gentleman did, went to California, came back to New Iberia. And what we come back to? A lawless town? So, what's going to happen with this? Like I asked the cop, me and the nurse from hospice. My momma catches seizures real bad from the loud music. She dies, who's being held responsible for it? Like the cop says, above his pay grade. So, I asked the lieutenant. And he told me, well, the one playing the music would be held responsible. They'll investigate him, and he would be held responsible. It shouldn't have to go that far. It should be put a stop to. Makes no sense. This gentleman that's sitting right here hears it from his house in the trailer park. Mr. Bobby couldn't be here, because he takes care of his parents. Some old people, they live down Belvedere Street. He could hear it all the way to his house. Sunday night, I was on the road, going to take a video to record it, to bring. My uncle hurried up, called a man, he told him shut his music, shut his music off. But I have other videos of the cops going over there, helping the man change the tire. Like my momma said, maybe we get help if we put ours there on a wheelchair and call for help to fix our wheelchair tire. Maybe the cops would come then. Other than that, what do we do? I'm here asking, what do we do? No answers.
No back and forth, we just hear your comments.
My comments, I'm sick and tired of it. A lot of people are that lives down there. A lot of them scared to open their mouth, because they fear the law. They fear the people that's playing the music. I don't fear the law. I don't fear the people that playing the music. I have cancer. I got one kidney left. I got heart problems. You think I care about the people that they're going to send to my house? No, I don't. I got cameras. I got signs up all over. Mr. Jimmy knows that. They come in my yard, I will tear my dog's loose on them. Whatever happens, happens. I can't. This is all I can say, because I don't want to get upset. I want to get back to my poor momma, she's by herself, because the nurse could not be with her tonight. I came here, like I told Ms. Morcott, to say what I had to say. But when you got cops that's going to warn them what's coming, it's not right. It's not right at all. And I got a lot of video on my phone of that. And I got a lot of videos saved, so it's unbelievable. Our tax dollars is paying for this. Ms. Morcott, that's all I got to say. I'm sorry if nobody liked what I had to say. That's y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this item?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Martin Conrad. I live at 924 Parkview Drive. My house is approximately 70 years old. Granted, the windows could be updated. My windows vibrate at night with noise. I am approximately 1,000 feet from the source of the noise. It vibrates the house, the windows, anything you can imagine. I go to bed early. I get up early. It's, when the weekend comes, it's out of control. It's perpetual noise. I have the modified diesel trucks going down Lewis Street. I have the modified automobiles going down Lewis Street. They cross the bridge right there. It's out of control. The gentleman, what the gentleman just said is absolutely correct. Nothing's been, nothing's going to happen. We know that. We want to express our opinion on it, though. We have not called the police department. That doesn't work. I have a situation ongoing right now. If you were to understand what's going on with that, you would laugh. That's with the sheriff's department. Some of the, 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 the meeting on the 5th of next month with the Planning and Zoning Commission is altogether different. But the noise issues that that could possibly create, I would be 108 feet away from that facility. My notes did not correspond with what the agenda said. My vernacular here is a little bit different. But outside music events attract people, a large group of people. They love live entertainment in this town, as do elsewhere. They attract couples. They attract friends and family and everything else. But they also attract the other side, too. And the other side is the drug dealers, the guns, and the 911 calls. That's an expense to all of us. We pay it in property taxes. We may not, we may think there's not an expense, but we do pay it in property taxes. That's a story for another minute. But I am very concerned with the noise. I'm not concerned about a barking dog. I'm not concerned at all about that. I'm concerned about group organized live music events that are not slowing down. They're gaining more popularity. That's what I'm concerned with. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, ma'am.
I am at 340 Center Street. My drive-through, the middle of my drive-through, I own the drive-through in the back parking lot. At the exact middle point where the gravel starts, I am 1,000 feet from the front door of Lighthouse Missionary Baptist Church. I want to state very clearly, I am a woman of faith. I am not against anybody worshiping whatsoever. My building is 112 years old. It is two inches shy of being as thick as the bank's vault. You have brick. You have cinematch fur on top of everything, sheet rock in my apartment with a heavily insulated attic. I want you to know that my son operates a sound company. He has run sound for major entertainers. When the volume first started, I personally called the chief of police and offered him the equipment at my cost to enforce the ordinance that was here years ago. I don't have anybody to train him. Well, believe me, there are three people in the state with certifications. I have one under house, under the roof. Offered, no charge. Didn't get an answer there. Kept calling, kept calling. This started with the sheriff's department. Right before the city police came back in, I posted, "Love thy neighbor." Wow. The secretary of the church lives in Franklin. She told me I should donate my property and be glad to donate it, and that they would worship any way they wanted. And then she went on to make comments as to what should be done to someone like me. Wow, God-fearing people. Just so you know, I am 22 feet in the air. My windows are sealed shut. Yes, I could use new windows. But physically, if I had a fire, I have got to break a window to get out. And I'm still dealing with vibration. It's unbelievable. Now, when my son goes out to do a job, or any one of our sound people go out to do a job, our company owns five of these devices. The devices are used to check sound, whether there are people in the room or not. And they're checked at different points of the night, because we can be fined for violating noise. But yet, yes, some of our guys have been fined, no doubt. Live music, I agree. It is our income, it is our life. Certain areas, yes. I understand this is a church. I understand that I sit in a C2, C3 zone. But I promise you, I've been there 15 years longer than the church. I pay property taxes out the wazoo. I own my property, there is no mortgage. And for that very reason, I'm fixing to leave the town I grew up in. I bought property in Canton. Thank you, people. Everything I value about this town, I thought I maintained the day my dad was murdered. I can't get away fast enough. That's not right, people. And I'm not the only one in the neighborhood, they're scared to speak. But I promise you, I have videos, I have the pictures from Facebook. Oh, my God. And I have it for years now, so if anybody would like access to my phone, y'all are more than welcome. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
She's my ride, I have to.
That's pretty funny.
I don't have a choice. First of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
This is my neighbor, Ms. Melissa Long, and there's not a lot I can piggyback and not say that she's not true. I live in a period house at 315 East Persian Street. And if some of you don't understand sound, sound travels through the ground and through solid objects in low frequencies. Travel is what you hear. But when you feel vibration, that's bass. I can feel the bass in my house, in my bed. Because like I said, I sit in a period house, I sit about two and a half feet off the ground. Her problem is she's in a brick building, on a stone slab, and it comes up through, and it causes vibration. The church unfortunately is built on something probably can, I've been, I've actually been inside a church a couple of times. It probably looks like a warehouse. And because it's aluminum building, aluminum, you know, aluminum siding, you know, and actually, the building is aluminum, it's aluminum sheets, you know, metal, you know, metal sheets, I'm not sure if it's aluminum, but anyway, acts like a speaker. And I can stand in my yard, and I can hear the music from the church and the vocals. And then when I don't hear the music and vocals, you know, because of sound, you know, the travel, the high frequencies are absorbed by rock and stuff, they can't get through it. But when I get into my house, now I can feel the bass coming up through the ground. Boom, 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 boom. And that's not fair to me. It's not fair to my neighbors. And God help me, I feel sorry for the people that live adjacent to the church. I am not trying to dissuade anyone from their faith. I'm not trying to dissuade anyone from how they worship. But what I'm saying is, as a courtesy to me, and to my neighbor, and to the other neighbors which aren't here to speak or aren't in a position to speak, if the church could take that into consideration, it's unfortunate that I have to be here speaking about house of worship and saying that's the criminal. And unfortunately, if it's against the law, it's criminal. I don't have a lot else to say without being repetitive, but I was, you know, I had a discussion with Ms. Long concerning, you know, when she made, when her son made the offer, and that was probably, I've been in the house a little over three years, and that was probably about a little past two years ago. He made the offer. And like I said, it's, it's, and then, I would've forgot to mention, not just in church services, is also what happens is during the week when they're practicing. You know, what they need is, honestly, just because you have a soundboard in front of you, it doesn't make you a sound engineer. What they probably need is professional evaluation to go and help them with, you know, with that, so it doesn't disturb the rest of the existing neighborhood. It doesn't have to be as loud as it has, as it is in the bass. But while I'm on that subject, also, we're having a problem with some of, some of the people in the neighborhood as well. And it's unfortunately, I have to agree with the gentleman on the left, you know, the police a lot of times don't respond. They don't know how to respond. But, you know, I'll speak to the chief on another day on that. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jonathan, you about to tell them how far you are from me at my back?
I'm about, about 60 feet from her. Okay. But it is behind her, by the way, not, not towards the street. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Portius Burke. I'm a citizen and resident in New Iberia. I've lived here for 75 years. I've lived at 902 Parkview since 1950, that's 71 years. Except for being away during the Vietnam War and off to formal universities and colleges, I've always lived in that area. I'm a practicing attorney in this city and have been for almost a half century. I live by Mr. Conrad. I am 1,200 feet from a noise source on East Main Street by McDonald's. I can hear every bit of that noise, the words, every decibel comes straight through. It'll come through the windows, it'll overwhelm a window unit. So, it is a problem. But what I've heard your citizens here and my fellow citizens all speak about is antipathy toward loud noise. I would dare say, none of us here would like a boombox right out our bedroom window, what that's the equivalent. What I would like to address is the old statute that is in place and the prop, the proposed changes. I have read your present statute, I have read the potential changes. And I will say this in the Reader's Digest version to all of you. If you complicate this statute on noise, when you send a police person out there, he or she will, will be able to file a complaint. Then if it goes from there to court, I can tell you as an old experienced trial lawyer, if there are any- if there are any ambiguities in your statute, I'll eat you alive. Criminal law, you're presumed innocent, and you have to be proven guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. It's the same thing for misdemeanor, there's no difference in the procedure. I have talked to Nicole, I am willing to volunteer my time and have done so thus far to help draft a statute. I don't know if tonight is an action night that you folks are going to vote on a statute. If that's the case tonight, then I'm here to suggest to you that the proposed statute may have some flaws in it, and that ultimately, when enacted, it is my opinion based on my, my legal background, my expertise, my review of the documents specifically, that it's going to be Swiss cheese. I think what you need is a very simple ordinance to protect people such as lady and gentleman who've come forth and said, "I've got all these problems." Well, to define those problems means if you can define the source of the noise and define the recipient, see how far away it is, and if he can hear it and is extended beyond the property line of the noise maker, prima facie, meaning it's proof in itself, he's guilty. It's that simple. You start getting into decibels, you get a machine, it's like an intoxicilizer for a drunk driver. You can get, you can, you can bust those things frequently just by saying it's not calibrated. Same thing if you put a, if you've seen these little decibel meters. But simply stated, at my home, and I've had police at my home, and I'm part of the complaints, but if the policeman is there and he or she can hear that noise, then, and get on Google Earth, okay, you're this far, I'm twelve hundred feet, that's a quarter of a mile from that noise, I can hear the words through my windows. So, you know, there you are, there's your complaint, there's your statute that says if he or she can hear that, then it's up to the prosecutor to pursue it. The other thing I would suggest is you all saying here in this proposal that weekends are like free, they can play up till ten or eleven at night. Well, it's fine if it's in an enclosed building, they can stay till 2:00 a.m., who cares? But when you open it up, a lot of us old folks go to bed before 10 o'clock, Saturday or not. And so I would suggest that you, you respect all neighborhoods for all noise intrusion and say like 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which is the end of day. There's no need to have to sit and listen to someone else's music. My final thought is that, you know, property lines protect us on our property. We, if we have a home, we rent or own, that is our castle. We want to be protected in that. We don't want a physical intrusion in our castle, nor do we want music or noise of any kind, we wish to enjoy what is ours. If you could erect an invisible fence for a noise maker outdoors, and he or she could contain her noise within those four corners, that would be fine. But noise, just like birds, do not, does not recognize a boundary, and it will filter through, and what I suggest, when you look at your statute, if you decide to adopt one, make it simple. He's making noise here, and he's crossing the property line, I can hear his noise there, it's documented by an officer of the law, then it goes through the process. That would be my suggestion. Thank you very much. It is evident that people are here and concerned. I would be surprised if someone would sit here and say, "I think I ought to have the right to blast my neighbor out with noise," it just doesn't make sense. It would be up to you folks to enact some sort of statute to protect them. Thank you very much, good evening and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else to comment on this item? You can.
Okay. I was just going to make a comment, because I know that y'all do, hi, I'm Nicole Burke, the city prosecutor. So I know that all, all the council members, y'all did get a copy of the ordinance. I did have a couple of, some suggestions that didn't make it before y'all all got y'all packets. We did, if you look at, and I don't think the entire ordinance is actually included in here, we just put in the changes, but we were keeping the stuff about the decibel meters in the ordinance. So, under what's in y'all packet, C on complaint, it's declared to be a public nuisance, it shall be unlawful for any person to willfully make, continue or cause to be, or continue to, any loud unnecessary noise or noise disturbance shall be defined as, just to make the statute, I mean, the ordinance a little bit more cohesive, we, to put in there either at an audible distance of three hundred feet, or B, and then go to the decibel meter thing. So it's kind of an ether or thing, it's just to kind of clarify that in the ordinance. Another thing is on C2. It talks about the three hundred foot prohibition will be deemed to start twenty feet from the main door that people use to enter. One of those things somebody had suggested to me, instead of just the main door, how about any entrance or exit? Because it could be the noise is coming from the back of the property as opposed to the front of the property, so just to kind of clear that up. And on the, and on D enforcement and penalties, it talks about a first offense, a second offense, and a third offense. I'd just like to change offense to conviction, because you do get, you do get, you're not going to be fined as soon as you, the cop goes out there and gives you a citation, you're going to have to come to court and all that, so it'd be conviction. So that's, yeah, that's, but those are the only changes that I wanted to, to call to your attention.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff?
I think we also talked about something that would have an exception for sporting events and permitted activities.
Yes, we, we did talk about that in there, and that actually should be in all of your packets. So, the way that your packet is, because I'm a little bit OCD and I really like highlights and color coding, the, the stuff that's in blue on your packets is all of the proposed changes to the ordinance, and then the yellow highlights is stuff that we changed since the last meeting. Yes, so that, yes, so that'll be, yellow stuff is since the last meeting, that's the way it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, the sports events was in there.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're hearing no other, seeing no other public comment, then I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Move.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swir, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Thank y'all. Madam Clerk? Orby?
Public hearing for ordinance number 2021-22, an ordinance confirming the abandonment and revocation of the dedication of Second Street between Malane and Pershing Street.
Do you have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Is anybody here to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, I was putting Deidre first. All right, thank you. Item 4C, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing for ordinance number 2021-23, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of New Iberia and Department of Public Safety and Corrections for Police Radio Interoperability.
Motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morkott, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Anyone here to address this issue? Hearing seen none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed, and Councilman Dustin Swir, thank y'all. Madam Clerk, 4D.
Public hearing for ordinance number 2021-24, an ordinance approving budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia.
Motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morkott. Anyone here to address this issue? Hearing and seen none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Whoa. I don't know who did what. Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed, and who was second? Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, thank y'all. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing for ordinance number 2021-25, an ordinance authorizing purchase of immovable properties fronting 20 Arpent Road at Anne Street for the purpose of creating Anne Street Park.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morkott. Anybody to comment on this item?
I have a question.
Okay, well, yes, sir.
I apologize, this is the first time I've come, so, yes, on the, the Anne Street, 20 Arpent Road, how big is the park potentially going to be?
It takes up two lots, there's a residence that's there now, and we'll be moving that house off, and then there's a piece behind it, and the, both of those.
Red's Grocery Store, right there, I believe.
Okay, well, that's neat to know. It's across the street from that, yeah, it's across the street from that, it's the other side, opposite. Yeah, there's a, it's opposite, across the street.
City spending on that.
Um, we're buying the lot, I think, for thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand dollars.
Two lots.
It's two lots, so we're buying two lots for thirteen thousand dollars, and then we are looking at getting some money from the state through our capital outlay. We're working with our legislatures to do that, and the, the vision of the park really quick, it will be fenced, it will be dawn to dusk, it will have a basketball court, some exercise equipment, and some playground equipment, but it's going to be the first of its kind in the city that it's dawn to dusk, a real little neighborhood park, that's an area that we really feel the city needs to show some love, so I think it's a perfect spot to do one of our first little neighborhood parks.
Sounds good, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Man, we got all kind of public comment tonight, that's good. Let's see, anything further? Then I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed, thank y'all. Kind of fun, we don't normally have that. Uh, Madam Clerk, 5A.
Ordinance number 2021-21, an ordinance amending sections 5866 and 5869 of Division 2 of Article 3 of Chapter 58 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia relative to unnecessary noise.
Okay, I'm going to need a motion to open it.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, second?
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Morkott, we're not voting on anything right now, we do have some changes, we wanted to have it here, so now I guess we have a discussion, and we look at what we're going to do. So you have it before you, the, what we've changed from our last meeting, and we had... Okay, so do we just kill it? Okay, well then, I was going to hash it all out at once, but thank you. What are we going to do, if, if the council sees fit, we're going to kill our Owen here? We'll kill our Owen here, and then we'll have our discussion when we get to the item down the road. I was trying to do two steps in one, so I'm not supposed to do that. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, the, um...
I guess you could have amended it here, but...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's possible for us to adopt the changes that the prosecutor has proposed, and then leave the door open to improvement, if Mr. Burke's willing to meet with her to, to get that, you know, to simplify the ordinance if we can do that. We can't really introduce something else tonight unless we really have it all hashed out.
Okay, are we changing this too much to, to proceed with it?
Well...
Imagine me, Mr. Procedure, but anyway, we do have to do that.
No, I don't think we're changing it too much to proceed with it.
Okay.
But I don't think it's, I don't think that we're, we're ready to say it's perfect either.
I understand.
So, if we can adopt this, not introduce anything more, because we don't really have the improved version to introduce, but if we get something that's better, bring it back up, is that okay?
I mean, anything we do, we can undo, anything we do, we can amend.
We can improve. We can improve, but I think, I think what we have before us is better than what we have.
It's better than what's in place, and, and it gives us a tool, because, believe me, you know, the, look, I have my chief here tonight, we're frustrated, and this came out of, please understand that, this came out of, we need something better that our officers can go out there and make a determination. This is not, hey, we just give up, this was generated, we've been working on this for months, and this was generated with the fact that we know we have an issue, and our police officers, you can, you know, they get knocked for this and that, but they're just as frustrated as anybody else because we didn't have something, you know, we, we've got a new city prosecutor, we've got a very active city judge, we have all come together and worked on this, and that's the beauty part of, we have a little ordinance committee that works on things and tries to improve our ordinances, but this is generated because we know we have an issue, just, just to tell you, but I know that this would be better and would give our police officers a tool to utilize now. Not perfect, but it would be better than what we have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we adopt tonight, can my constituents call tomorrow the PD and report somebody? I mean, it's really just that bad? And will anything happen to them? Because right now, the way it's stated is they have to use the decibel meter, correct?
Correct.
So if we adopt tonight, the officers can go and hear the loud music from three hundred feet away and issue a citation?
I'm going to call my chief up, because we do have to educate our officers, our officers haven't seen this new, you know, the chief has, but the officers haven't even seen this yet, so I wouldn't say it'd be overnight, let's not get carried away that tomorrow morning, that's an unrealistic expectation.
Yeah, I mean, the first thing that, that our aspect was, was to see where our legislative body was going to do, because until it becomes law of the city, then we couldn't enforce anything. So tonight's meeting is to kind of break down where we're at and simplify, and I agree with Mr. Burke, to simplify things for our offices, when, when you've got DB meters that may be one decibel under, or, you know, within, of course, calibration, we send them off, we get them back, you know, it, it's a continuous issue. We know the issues, we get continuous complaints from the music coming from all parts of town. So, yes, it would, would simplify things. The educational thing is, is that I just need to get into my ranks and educate them exactly what the ordinance is. If it's going to be three hundred feet, then obviously, we, we would have to either walk off or, or deal with that issue when that, when that, you know, that music comes through, over the three hundred foot distance and all that kind of stuff.
In all fairness, they need to know what level of noise at three hundred feet, because I'm sorry, there's a difference between outside and inside, there's a difference, in other words, I can't stop every, every noise-making activity is not going to be stopped, that's not realistic.
And, and then it's also, are you determining the music inside of someone's residence, or are you determining just outside?
Right.
So it's a lot to, you know, because that's the part of education of our offices, is what exactly am I educating my officers to determine? You know, is it just from that distance, standing outside, is it from inside someone's residence? What is that?
Yeah, I can't flood, I can't...
I think Nicole probably would agree that she needs some teeth, that we're, we're giving her what we find.
And I can't flood Nicole, we have a brand-new ordinance, I want my officers to do it right, and I want them to be educated, because I can't flood the city court system with a ton of complaints that don't hold up, then, then I'm probably worse than I was before. So like I said, it will come, and, and we do this, and then it becomes a city ordinance, but you do, our citizens, as well as us, need to be a little patient, because I want this to go off correctly. And I have seen other ordinances, I've had times when we started, and you can, the chief would tell you that I had to call down and say, "Wait a minute, they, they, an officer said this, that's not, that's not how ordinance reads." And we've had times to stop and educate people, and when we've made other changes, we've had to, I've learned, we had to slow down a little bit, because they still working off of the, the older ordinance, you know?
And, and like I said, we've all, I've always told people that have come to me and said that, why don't you just arrest people? Well, our, our job is a little more than just that, because we want to make sure we're sending something up to be prosecuted, because that ticket is not worth the paper we write it on unless it has something that, that our prosecutor can take and actually get a conviction on. That's where you start holding people to the grime, when they start paying fines, when they start having consequences to their actions. A, a ticket, if you can throw it away because it, it's unconstitutional, whatever that may be, is not doing us any good. We want to make sure we have teeth behind it, and I, and I agree with the mayor saying.
And that an older prosecutor can't swish cheeses. It's got to be good, it's got to be right.
So about how long are we thinking, I mean? And I'm, I'm asking because I get the complaints.
Well, we all do. I got a, I got a, I got three people in my office, we get tons of complaints, we all do.
I think you heard people shred me a little bit, because they're not getting the results that, that they're looking for, and the whole part is, is to get some teeth to give us some ability to, to enforce.
Right, and I did explain that to them, that, you know, we have to change the ordinance so that they do have the teeth. Yeah, I was just asking, on behalf of them, you know, at what point can they actually start making these complaints, and they're legit, something can be done?
If we pass it tonight, how long you need, chief?
Well, I mean, if it's passed tonight with some clarity on where are we enforcing from, in other words, is it from inside the residence, or, or just from three hundred feet, period? I just need to know specifically what the ordinance dictates, and then give me a couple of weeks to just get everybody knowing what the platform is. That way, it's from one shift to another, to make sure all my shifts know exactly what the enforcement is, so nobody gets misinformation, because you have, I don't want one officer saying one thing, another officer not saying the same thing.
Yeah.
It needs to be with the lawyers.
Okay, makes sense.
May I respond to something you said?
You're really not supposed to, we have our public comment time, uh...
Well, then, I'll shut up, but I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
The, I mean, the ordinance says three hundred feet from the door.
Yes.
Or from, from an entrance to the building. And I guess, I guess the real question, I hate to put Nicole on the spot, but, you know, she's the one... but, you know, she's the one who needs us to give her what she needs to prosecute these cases, so, you know, is, is, is it worth it adopting this tonight and then continuing to work on it? Or should we just back up and come up with a, a new ordinance from the start?
Thank you, Chief.
And I know there are people, I know the public is tired of waiting on this, and I know, um, I know we're gonna have some pushback from a lot of different places if we enforce this thing literally the way it's written, you know, so you guys gotta be ready for that, but, uh, I'd like, I'd like to hear from Nicole, because she's the, she's the person that we trust to do this work and call on to guide us here.
Right, and, um, it's really gonna, it's really just gonna depend upon, um, how creative people get, and where the, where the, um, the flaws that they see in it, um, when they, 'cause, yeah, I'm expecting some of these people to go out and hire lawyers, and they're gonna start poking at it, and we're gonna poke at it. So when you're writing laws or ordinances or what, anything that governs a lot of people, you're trying to come up with all these different scenarios, and like, okay, but we, we want, like, like the, um, the sports things, and we had to have an exception for that, you're trying to come up with every single possible thing that you can think of at the time, and I'm thinking about it, and I know exactly what I want, and somebody may come along and go, hey, you have this right here, and I'm like, oh, that's so obvious, why didn't I think about that? But, I mean, I know it's not perfect, I'm, I'm okay with it, we can pass it, and we can go and kind of see how it goes. Now, I, if we do that, I just want y'all all to be aware, somebody may come up and somebody say, hey, well, you know, here's a flaw here, and then we, it's gonna render some of that stuff useless until we come back and re-amend it. That is a potential, that, that could be a potential problem. Um, but if everybody's good with that, I mean, we could, we could go forward. Does that answer your question, in kind of a lawyer-y type non-answer?
But we have that with any ordinance, you know, when other ordinances are challenged, we have to back up and hit the restart button and fix them.
It is, it's exactly-
Before, that some things haven't gone the way we thought, or somebody got really creative, and we had to come back and, and amend an ordinance. That does, that does happen.
It does, it, it, you know, this is just brand-new, so it's really, it's completely untested, we just don't know, um, we don't know where they're gonna come at it from, but, I mean, we could, we could do it.
Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
We did have, during the public comment, that the people, two people in particular were talking about, um, noise coming from the church. This ordinance wouldn't, um, wouldn't help that.
Well, yeah, it would, it's music. It's amplified noise, they're taking-
But the timeframe. They don't have church after twelve or after ten most of the time.
And, yeah, you're right, 'cause I did wanna ask when they, and I know you're not supposed to do back and forth, but I almost did wanna ask them, what times are you talking about, 'cause, um-
I could tell you from Melissa's aspect, it, it sometimes they'll play until midnight.
I know it's late.
Yes. She, she's talked, she has talked to me in the past, and it's been, that it's going on past, uh, past midnight, even with the practicing. Now, are, are, are we also looking at the times still being, 'cause I do get complaints from people that go to bed before ten o'clock, so are we still looking at those times being left in? Uh, what, ten or eleven o'clock, whatever it is now, set up?
So-
There we go. What, yes, ma'am?
I, I will, I'll make a comment, because I'm the person who probably said that I felt like on Friday and Saturday night, we should extend it till midnight, and I appreciate everyone here and all the comments. I get the noise too, but I, I also feel like we have to balance it out, because not every citizen in here goes to bed before ten o'clock. So, there's gotta be some sort of balance. We have to make sure that we're not infringing on other people's ability to enjoy themselves as well. So, on a Friday and Saturday night, which is kind of considered our weekend, where most people, that's when they wanna kind of play their music or whatever, or go to clubs or whatever, I still believe that we should leave it till twelve, because these business owners are trying to make money, and that's usually the days of the week when they make their money, because they're providing entertainment for the people in the, in the city. Also, as we try to bring in more tourism to the city, if we're shutting everything down at ten o'clock on a Friday and Saturday, that's not a whole lot of tourism, or reason why people are gonna come here to enjoy themselves. So, I still believe that those times are appropriate, and I, I believe they should stay in the amendment.
Okay. Anybody else?
My comment is, and, and I don't know if I'm off track, I'm hearing around, like, seem like every, uh, ordinance or law that deals with, um, I, I'm gonna call them misdemeanors, like, um, law ordering and things of those nature, seem like it, they always end up being cat and mouse, cat and mouse chase. When you get there, you don't hear the noise, and now it's the, the resident, his word against, you know, the assailant, I guess you can call him, you know? I heard loud music, and then by the time you get there, there's no more music. So, do we, that is, to me, a-
So, um, there actually is, we did, we've tried to put a lot of options in this, um, ordinance, and we've kind of tried to give the cops a lot of, um, different options to do, but one of the things, if you look at, um, under C two, it says, in addition to observations by law enforcement officials, you can actually file a complaint on this, like, yourself. So, you just go, you fill out an affidavit, you bring it to the NIPD, and you say, hey, at eleven o'clock on a Wednesday night, this was bothering me, but you need to fill out that affidavit. And so the point of that is, is that, um, you, I know some people never wanna do this. They, they always wanna be that anonymous person, they're gonna call the cops, they just, you know, hey, go turn down the noise, and they're gonna be that anonymous person. Um, but this allows, um, us to actually have a witness, and, but you can come and do it yourself. You don't necessarily, like, the cops don't have to be the one hearing it at the time. You can come and file an affidavit and say that yourself.
And go, and show up at court.
Yes, you do.
But you would have, you, you need to tell people that, because I've gotten past affidavits, they didn't wanna come to court.
Right, you're not gonna be able to do anonymous person, and I'm, I'm very sorry, 'cause sometimes this is a neighbor thing, and you don't wanna upset your neighbors. I, I do, I get all that, but it's almost like, you gotta help me to help you, and I need, I need them to help us. So, um, yeah.
I, I have something, and I'm not, look, I wanna pass this, and I wanna do it, so I'm not trying to put a stick in the spokes, but during the hours of noise being allowed, can't you still be too loud? 'Cause the way we have it right now, we're saying, okay, twelve at night, you know, is your stopping point, but I do see that it could be nine o'clock, ten o'clock, or eleven o'clock, or during the middle of the day. You could, this could be anytime. Should we have something, and it just hit me like a lightbulb, that even during the appropriate hours that we're saying, take your noise and amplify, can't you amplify too much?
Yes.
Can't we still be able to say, guess what, tone it down? We should be able to. I'm adding something we didn't even talk about, and I'm sorry, we have an ordinance committee, but it just popped in my head. But we really should have something that during the appropriate hours that we're saying, make noise, that it could be too much. Why are you laughing, Jeff? Am I wrong?
No, I'm just, I thought, there's some times a day, maybe it's five hundred feet, some times a day, maybe it's three hundred feet, some times, you know?
I'm, I'm being serious, but they, you know-
If I didn't object on that particular point, I don't know whose district Burgery Street is, but I get a ton of calls from residents on Burgery Street, and usually it's around nine PM, and the biggest thing is, is the music from one of the neighbors that's blaring up the neighborhood. And I would agree that that is an issue we face a lot, 'cause our office is having to go and tell them, it's not after ten o'clock. You know, so I think it's something that would need to be-
But as I'm playing the complaints in my head, listening to what our citizens who came here tonight, and playing the complaints in my head, because I, I really do get into all of this, I'm thinking, you know, that's something we've missed. Anyway, now I'm gonna shut up and call my, my counsel. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
So, Nicole, I, I don't, I don't see any fatal flaws with the resolution. You know, I do think that Jeff's right, that there may be some tweaking down the road, but from what I'm understanding, even within the loud time zone, if they exceed that decibel level, or past three hundred, they can still be cited, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, so, if we, Mr. Burke, and if I can use your name, Mr. Burke hears the noise at nine o'clock, past three hundred feet, he still can be cited for a citation, no matter if he's within that timeframe or not, correct?
Didn't say that.
No, not, not the way it's written right now.
That's our problem.
That's the problem.
Yeah, the way it's written right now, no. It, you'd have to wait until ten o'clock or whatever.
So, so, so what I'm saying is that the ordinance, and that's why I wanted you to, the ordinance cannot be governed within that selected timeframe, so we, we need to be able to govern a certain level of noise within that timeframe. Am I correct? Am I right? Wrong? I'm asking for your opinion.
Yes, 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 that's what, yeah, we do, we-
You can be, you can be too loud during the hours we allow with noise.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we need some tool for that.
Yes.
So it sounds like we still need to make, to do some work on this.
It does, like I said, we should've thought of that sooner, but, I mean-
So right now, and that's what I meant, right now, if we were to pass this currently, and Chief-
It works at the hours we stay, past the hours-
Call the chief up to investigate Mr. Burke at nine o'clock, and they, fifty decibels above whatever, ain't nothing you can do, right? Right, wrong?
Well, no, because the, um, if you, if you use, if you're actually gonna use the decibel meter, which I know we have problems with, but the decibel meter one still is in there.
It's anytime.
Um, it's anytime. It's, that's anytime.
That's what I'm asking.
That's, me too. I wanted to make sure we had a tool for inside the appropriate hours, 'cause too loud is too loud.
That's my point.
Yeah, and there's a, there's, and there, there's a table on it.
Is it clear?
Is it clear?
I, I'm trying to follow some advice I got. Here's your problem, here's your, you know, link them together, you know?
It goes, um, yeah-
I know I'm out of order, but it's the KISS method, Mayor. If it's there and it's there, it's too loud. It's simple.
It's okay, you out of order.
So, uh, yeah, the way that it works, um, if it, if it's, uh, it looks like it's residential between seven AM to ten PM, it's sixty-five decibels, and for night, from ten PM to six, fifty-nine AM, it's sixty decibels. So if you're over that, you're, yeah, and it does have a, um, a five decibel difference for day and night.
So you, you think we covered that even in the other times? That makes me feel a lot better.
You just have to use the decibel meter.
Okay, that's wrong.
Can I make another comment?
Uh, yeah, let me, uh, you, you, he had the floor, I don't know who was next. Uh, Marlon?
I mean, and at the end of the day, at the end of the day-
Yes, sir.
If you're in a neighborhood or a community, where they're making noise, and you don't call, after the ordinance is finished, you, you don't call, then you don't get that resolved.
No, we can't help you, we don't know about it. Yeah, yes, sir.
I, I get-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, the only other thing that I think we should consider, and since we're gonna make some changes to the ordinance again, or amend it again, I'd like to try to bring this up again. Um, I know we have part of the penalty for, I guess, the third offense, is incarceration up to six months. I absolutely still don't agree with that. Um, I do believe that we have to have some strong penalties, but I think you ought to put community service in there, because even though we have, like, right now, they're not putting people in jail for misdemeanors because of COVID, but three years from now, COVID's gone, I, I still don't understand, I don't believe that that should be the final penalty. I think we should, but give people cus, uh, community service to do some of this, you know, to work off some of these citations that we give them for noise. So I just, since we amended it again, I thought I'd bring it up again.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and if I can address your concerns, um, because I really do appreciate that you brought that up, because that is one of the big things right now, is that the legislature's really big into, um, we're not incarcerating violent offenders, uh, non-violent offenders, um, and you had brought up community service. So, the issue with this is, is that, um, you can't just sentence somebody to community service. Um, you have to, so, um, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, uh, do you, do you understand how probation works? 'Cause I know a lot of people don't really understand how the court system works and everything. So, um, what we do is, a lot of times in misdemeanor, we do utilize our probation department, and we, we put people on probation. In order to make sure that they're gonna do community service, you have to put them on probation, and you have to have, uh, so what the judge does is, when he sentences somebody, he says, okay, you're gonna do thirty days in jail, but I'm gonna suspend that time, that means you don't do any of that time, and I'm gonna put you on probation, and then you're gonna have to do X, Y, and Z on probation, and community service, or a fine, or go to classes, or whatever. But there's some supervision over you to make sure you're doing that community service. If you just sentence somebody, say, okay, I want you to do thirty hours of community service, there's, but you don't put them on probation, there's nothing, there's no oversight, there's nobody to supervise you, and there's, we have no accountability to make sure that that's gonna get done. So, that's why we have this, that, that's why the jail time is there. It's not necessarily to put the people in jail, it's also more so that you can put them on probation. You have to have a jail, if that makes sense, I know that sounds kind of backwards, but there does have to be that jail time so you can suspend it, so you can put the person on probation, if that make, yeah. And, and, oh, and while we're talking about this too, um, I'm sorry. I never come to meetings, and now I'm, just won't shut up. Um, no, Judge Hike and I have been talking, and I wanted to invite anybody to the, on the council, if y'all wanna come to, um, one of the court hearings, or, um, those are really kind of boring, I don't suggest that, but if y'all would like to come, and we could kind of do, like, maybe a field trip, and kind of walk y'all through, like, the police, to the prosecutor, to the judge's office, and kind of give y'all an overview of the court system, and how Judge Hike works, and how, um, all the different things that we do. Um, y'all are more than welcome, please just get in touch with our office and, um, let us know, and we'd be more than willing to, um, discuss any of that with y'all, so.
Absolutely, and, and just so you know, um, I think that what you and Judge Hike do, I've been in the court before, one of my constituents, they had me sitting there with them for eight hours.
I know, I, I apologize. It's long.
But, um, I guess for me, whatever's in writing is ten years down the line when Judge Hike is not in office, and maybe you're not in office, that's still what's on the books.
And I do, and I under, I do understand that.
So I'm looking long-term, I'm, I, I honestly think you guys do a really good job, but when I look long-term, when, when, when all of us maybe aren't in these seats, or you guys are not in that role, I mean, how's that law gonna be used against the people of the city? That's all, that's what I'm thinking of.
And interpreted.
Yeah.
And, and I do, and I, I do, and I completely get that, and I understand, because, yeah, you know, you, some people you trust, and then other people come in, and you're like, oh, I don't really know about that person. But, um, you know, it's, if somebody goes to jail on this, it would be on a conviction of a third or subsequent offense. You would have, um, two chance, at least two chances in the front of it, and, um, to me, that's just more of a person that's just thumbing their nose out, I'm going, whatever, I don't care, and then they go back in their house and turn up their music even louder. I mean-
Well, no, I get that, but think about this, Nicole, it's also very subjective, because it's based on the, the officers kind of hearing, or believing that the noise is too loud, that's subjective.
Mm-hmm.
And so when things are subjective, and they're based on somebody's opinion of something, that's gray. And so I would hate to see, how many, how many misdemeanors do you have before it turns into a felony?
Oh, on this? None.
Okay, good.
Yeah, this is not gonna be felony.
But now I can be charged, but I, I could have, like, three misdemeanors, so, I, again, I understand we have a problem here. I'm one of those people that complain all the time, 'cause I hear the boom, boom, boom by my house, but I'm also looking long-term, you know, how's this law gonna be used ten years from now? So we just have to be careful.
Okay, no, and I, and I, and really, thank you for pointing that out, 'cause we did kind of change, that's what we did with some of the changes on it.
Thank you.
We would be a little bit of an subjective, though, 'cause we have body cam. You'd actually be able to see here.
That's, that's true too, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Who had their hand up next? Mr. Broussard, Councilman Broussard?
Habitual, habitual people that do it over and over, like you said, yeah, that's where their fine is. You have to leave something tight in a big bite to the noise issue. We haven't had this for seventeen years. We're on a breakthrough, so anything we're doing tonight is wonderful. We gotta do some more, 'cause I'm right up your alley about noise. At nine o'clock in the morning, I don't like noise all the time. That should be a certain amount, you know, that y'all can do, but don't be watching your car boom-booming all day long. Every neighborhood has this. But our neighborhood, we've been tightening up, they don't try too often. We tighten up on them big time, so. And that's our neighborhoods, neighborhood watchers, your neighborhood people yourself, make an image with the mamas and daddies of the ones doing this. You gotta go back to the old days, we, we never had this trouble way back. So I said my piece, yeah, I wanna sleep at night calmly, you got my attention. We hope we can tighten up this ordinance to where it's really good all day long. Y'all wanna do the noise, go out in the country. We gotta park in Lydia. All day long. I don't think you hear too much way over there.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard.
But it's, it's, uh, we gotta, there's a big bite on, on noise, we making a beginning tonight. Yes, we gonna vote for this, it's a start, but we will straighten it out more and more as it goes.
Yes, Dustin.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Swer.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Cat daddy.
Cat daddy. Cat daddy, it's that coat, man, you know? How serious can I take him, man?
Yeah, hey, it's good. Uh, okay, so, we're gonna be voting on this tonight to put it in effect, to tighten on- Uh, okay, so, we're gonna be voting on this tonight to put it in effect, to tighten down, tighten down on what we have going on. I totally get it. I live next door to one of these noise offenders, and I hear it all the time. Got a two, two and a five year old wakes up every night, come into my bed because the noise. Um, so, I, I really get y'all frustration. So, I kind of, so we are gonna be tackling the noise even in that timeframe, because it's amplified noise, so we can go out and cite in that timeframe, and then be outside of it. Now, if we vote on this tonight, how, how, how soon can we come, maybe make, because we did agree last meeting, there needs to be some, I guess, some tweaking done as far as maybe time. I know that Sundays, there's nothing on Sundays at all.
No, it is.
No, it's changed.
It's changed.
So, it's changed, so we're gonna.
Well, one, one thing that I need to clarify, okay, and I may ask Jeff, just to make sure I'm on the right page, okay? This item right here in the agenda is the ordinance the way it was written last time. Is that right, Jeff? Or is it, can we amend it tonight and still adopt it? Because what's, what we taught, we've made a lot of suggestions.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I know, but what's in the packet, and what we did last meeting were a little different.
Yeah, this is further back.
So, if I'm on the old one, as I think I am, before we vote, can we amend these changes in and vote for it and adopt it tonight?
I think if the public has fair notice about what we're talking about.
Okay.
You know, and, and the ordinance is not substantially different.
Okay.
Then we've given the public notice of what, what's going on, and you can move tonight to adopt it with the amendments.
Okay, I just didn't want my council to be discussing something and thinking we were doing something we weren't. I wanted clarity that at least the changes that Nicole has worked on, and that, you know, they would be in there, and that's what we would be passing.
No, I, and I believe that's why we have the public hearing process.
That's fine. I, I, I thought so too, but I just wanna make sure. I don't wanna pass something, and you tell me it was the one before we amended.
But, you know, we gotta watch the bait and switch, which we're always trying to be careful about. You know, we don't wanna propose something and pass something different.
No, sir, we don't.
I think this is substantially the same, I think you could adopt this tonight.
Okay.
And then continue to work on it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that at least had those amendments that, that were worked on already.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. So, everybody's clear that wherever we end up in this discussion, if we vote, we'll vote on what's in your packet, that is color highlighted, that we have worked on and tweaked some. So, that's what we would be, you know, not the, not last week, na, two weeks ago, that didn't have those minor changes. Just so we're clear, I want everybody to know what we're doing. Yes, sir.
That's why I brought it up, because I didn't know if we were voting on the.
I, I knew that's where you were heading, so I figured.
It's like, okay, so, we're gonna vote on this old ordinance, which, like.
I cut the old dog's tail off all at once.
Appreciate that.
That's a Mr. Sestner.
That's a Mr. Sestner joke, yeah.
I know, it is. Old joke. Is there any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
So, when do we get to add in, uh, during the day, like, the hours that were not discussed? When do we get to add that in, that it is too loud?
Well, we have that already from talking to Nicole, remember Nicole got up and said that's what we would use a decibel meter for, so it's in there.
We have a decibel meter?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know why I thought we didn't.
Yes.
I don't know where I got that from.
We do, Chief?
We do. I'll check it, make sure we, I know we had Senate, uh, I've been out a few lines, but the Senate book recalibration. They should be back. I will double check it.
Maybe that's why I thought y'all didn't have one. I think someone said.
I know there has been some issues, and I know that we have sent it off.
It must have been getting worked on.
And, and now that we have an ordinance that has some teeth to it, Chief, let's, uh, let's get a couple more. So, it, we, we have money in the budget, so we'll actually get a couple more. And you just need to be patient, and give us a few weeks to kind of, you know, get this implemented.
Gotcha.
If that's what we wanna do.
Okay, cool. I'm done.
Okay, any other discussion? All right?
One, one more question?
Yeah, sure.
We are gonna have an opportunity, if we're gonna amend it again, we are gonna have an opportunity to kind of just send in our amendments. Are we, are we closing this out, or are we, are gonna continue to work on it?
If we vote right now, we have this new ordinance that's in your packet, that has been amended already minorly. We have that in place. That is a working ordinance, give us a couple weeks, I don't worry about it. Start thinking tomorrow morning, but that is a working ordinance.
Right.
Can we come back and amend it further if we want to? Sure we can. We can do that with anything we want to.
Okay.
Um, so, if that's something we wanna do, we can. If we wanna let it run for a little while, and see how it goes, and find the bugs, find the kinks, and then come back. But I mean, at any time, we can bring something back up. That's kind of what we're utilizing the ordinance, ordinance committee for. So, it would be in place if, if you choose to do that. It would be in place, but I'm, I'm not, we can, we could adjust it.
Okay.
As with any other ordinance, you know?
Well, I'm not on the ordinance committee, so I'm just asking.
No, I know, yes, but no, we could. And look, remember, anything this body does, we can undo. Anytime we make a mistake, we can amend it, uh, so that's not, you know, because you can put it on the agenda, and we can hit it again.
Okay.
Well, then, if there's no further discussion, okay, let me make sure, I wanna get this right. We had a motion in a second, we had a long discussion, okay? Then, I would ask you, please vote your machines. Thank y'all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, five B.
Ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance confirming the abandonment and revocation of the dedication of Second Street between Moline Street and Pershing Street.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, five C.
Ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of New Iberia and Department of Public Safety and Corrections for Police Radio Interoperability.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swer, and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Five D.
Ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance approving budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia.
Do I have a motion?
Vote motion.
Whoa.
Random.
Uh, here was come almost everybody. I'm gonna do, uh, Councilman Dustin Swer, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin. I don't know who else did, but thank you. It's a good one. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Yes, yeah, it's all good stuff. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
How long will it take to get this new street sweeper?
Well, sir, uh, there are a few things that I'm gonna order right away. The street sweeper's pretty clean. I don't need data, correct? I don't need anything. So, my plan is, right after the holidays in January, to order the street sweep, to order the fire truck. Okay, so those are two pieces of equipment that I can justify, or that are out of the money. And the first project we're proceeding with is the splash pad at the West End. So, those three things are gonna happen in January first, you know, second day I come back, we are hitting the go button on those.
All right, I'm making a note.
Uh, please do, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Are we on the old driving range yet?
No, ma'am, we don't. We're no closer to owning the old driving range than we were, I don't know, when we proposed it. Uh, I think, I think, I, I have to say we're a little bit closer. I would think that the parish is working on it. Let's ask Jeff.
It's actually owned, I think, by Parish Recreation District.
Yeah.
And we've had some discussions with them. And, uh, I had some discussion with somebody in the DA's office who's been working on that, who's ready to pick that up again when we're ready to talk about it.
Okay.
So, I think we can, and, um, so we need to pick it up again and work on it.
I want to, I mean, that money's, you know that money's been budgeted, you and I talk about it pretty often, that is a project that will lead.
That was a conversation that I had this week.
Good, that's a purchase that will lead to a drainage project that I, I, I know we desperately need. So, I'm, I'm trying.
Okay, it's just, it's been a long time. I don't think it's you.
No, ma'am, it's not.
I don't know.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Where's the delay coming from exactly, but I know that we've talked before, and you are pushing for it. So, um, I was just curious as to where it's gone, but.
Okay.
Nowhere.
Thank you. You had a comment?
Yeah, so, so, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, that this purchase of property is indicative to money we allocated through the American Rescue Plan to do a drainage issue, am I right?
Well, this, this project's a lot longer than that, okay? It's money from the last council to buy the property, and then I would use drainage money, but I didn't have enough drainage money to do the whole project, okay? So, once we own the property, I would have gone to Capital Outlay, we would have looked at, you know, doing it in phases. Then the American Rescue money came, and we have a million dollars that it won't be till January, February. We're actually applying for the sewer money now, uh, but that's coming up. But the drainage package is not even out yet. When the drainage package comes out, y'all have, with this American Rescue Plan, we've set a million dollars aside to try to get five million, and so that's the plan. Now, if we don't get the five million, we still have a million for drainage.
Right.
Not that it would all go to, to one district, we might have to split it up, but in my drainage funds, that is an important project, but I have to own the property.
Right, right.
So, that's kind of the story. We are hoping to do it all. If we can't do it all, we'll back up and revisit.
Okay.
So, that's more ammunition, Jeff.
Yeah, and.
I know where you're going with it.
And there's just part of this I don't wanna talk about in public, honestly.
No, no.
We'll get that. Yes, sir.
You know, we, we talk about drainage, man, I'll tell you, when I first got here, we had, I had more calls about drainage than anything, and, man, I, we, we're getting better, so I like seeing us stay on top of it. So, if we're good now, we can only get better.
That's ex, and drainage is one of the most important things, that every district has drainage issues, and still does. We haven't fixed them all, but it is one that I'm, you know, committed to continue to put money at it, because we have to. Cool. Okay, then if there's no other discussion on the American Rescue, uh, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. This is awesome. Thank y'all very much. All right, five E.
Ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of immovable properties fronting Twenty Arpent Road at Anne Street for the purpose of creating Anne Street Park.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'm excited.
Yes, sir.
I think this is awesome, um.
I do too. By the added day.
In an underserved community.
Underserved community, you know, knocking out a, uh, I just wish it was across the street at that old store. I wish it was knocking that down.
I know, that's, that's definitely on the list.
Uh, has that been turned in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
He boarded it, is what he did.
I wrote by the added day, though. The chief and I, we, we, I pointed the park out to the chief this morning, and, uh, anyway.
Yeah, we can't have that next Tower Park. Maybe I snuck that in there, but that's where I was going with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make it happen.
A district, I'm, we're gonna help, we're gonna help.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
All right, any other further discussion? Then, uh, I would ask you to please vote your machines. Good. Now we can move this one forward.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. This is, this is gonna be a good project. This is the start of, of getting in communities, showing something, uh, you know, contributing where we have, and expanding our park system. I, I just think it's, it's really a, a, a good move.
Be one of them nice, and, and I know we'd be one of them nice, uh, little parks. What we can do to like the three-on-three basketball with the police department.
There you go.
Bring some more up.
I got a basketball player on, on my, my fourth.
Yeah, we got a good one. That's our ringer. Don't tell them about Hodge. Don't tell them about Hodge. Yeah, we'll play y'all whenever y'all want. Not me, I'll watch. All right, Madam Clerk, on to resolution six A.
Resolution twenty-one dash one fifty-four, accepting change order number one for the installation and integration of emergency standby generator project at Teed Bayou wastewater treatment plant, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman, it was, uh, Deedee, Deedee Johnson, thank you, and who was the second? Mr. Broussard, Councilman Broussard, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seen none, uh, I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. I wish what a director thanks you.
Now you can go back to his vacation.
That's exactly right.
On his cave.
Yep, item six B. Madam Clerk?
I know, I lost my place.
I know, it's okay. I know, I, I never know where I'm at, it's all right.
Twenty-one, one fifty-five.
Resolution twenty-one, one fifty-five, authorizing and directing the mayor and/or his staff to complete and execute the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Form for and on behalf of the City of New Iberia.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was reading through this thing, and it mentioned about, I guess, um, publishing our financials. I mean, can the public see our, um, our budget on, online? Is it online? Because I couldn't find it, and, maybe I didn't know where to look.
It's not online, but I do retain a copy in my office. It can be viewed at any time.
So, they would have to come here?
Yes.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't put it online?
I think it's just the size, honestly.
I think it's just so much stuff?
Yeah. Huh? Okay, I just was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's, they can do a public records request, or they can just come here and flip through the budget, we, you know? And we talk about it here, we don't spend any money that doesn't come before, you know? And all those budget updates and everything, I mean, we try to be as transparent as we can.
It's, you know, technology background, we believe in putting everything online.
I know, I know. But you noticed I answered all the questions this year?
Yes.
Because last year, you asked me a que, they forgot to add, I don't know why they didn't answer, but they didn't answer a question. So, I was waiting for that, but I looked, first thing I did when I got it, I said, okay, let me beat Deedee to the punch. It's a compliment. Yes, sir.
Being that it's a public records request, when the public comes and we have to make copies, are they, they charged for that, correct? Now, if they wanted to look at it right there, then and there.
They can look at it all they want here. If we make copies, by law, I have to charge them.
Correct.
But if they wanna sit there in the lobby and look at it for the next twenty years, I guess they can come every day.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Then, uh, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Seven A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-six, and ordinance amending section fourteen-five, fourteen-six, and fourteen-seven of Article One of Chapter Fourteen of the Code of Ordinance of the City of New Iberia relative to dangerous animals, and to set for public hearing on January fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin, I think Dustin got it, Councilman Dustin Swer. Is there any discussion?
So, um, I just have a question.
Hmm.
It says that the police officer will determine if an animal is dangerous. Are they gonna be trained, because, you know, a barking dog isn't always necessarily a dangerous. They just, you know, be barking sometimes to be protective, but how are they gonna determine if it's a dangerous animal?
Yeah, on, on a dangerous dog, we, we determine through past records if a dog has attacked more than once.
Okay.
And, but it's not stopped there, because we send it up to the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're not the, the all stop on declaring a, an animal dangerous or vicious. They're really just a start. We're the start. And, and we are, it, am I right? I'm not, you said it bit somebody. Right. In other words, if we go, a barking dog. Yes, a barking. We currently have one up that's bit a particular family member three times. So we declared it, we sent it to the board to review what we've looked at in the reports.
Okay, all right, so.
And then that person has a right to come in.
Okay, no, but I'm saying, like, in my community, there's a couple pit bulls. And the other day, one was loose, and it was barking like crazy. So needless to say, I went back home. I wasn't going that way. So is that considered, could I call and say that's a dangerous dog? Because, I mean.
You could call and say it's a loose dog, and we have some new arrangement with the, matter of fact, you remember y'all approved that, we're gonna be paying more into the system, if you will, of the parish's animal control. So we expect that with the new director and new staff members that they have, they would go and see about the dog. You should call it in because it could bite somebody. But I don't think it's a dangerous dog until it's active.
Until they bite. Okay, I just wanted to understand it because I didn't.
You can think mean, you just can't agree.
Yeah. I didn't know what dangerous meant here. It didn't say bite, so.
Right.
And I think the.
Yes, sir.
I think the part of the ordinance that we're changing doesn't include the definitions part. So I think that's defined other places.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
And the purpose of this was to give discretion to the committee. Because before, we said if it's a dangerous dog, then you had to do this whole big, long list of stuff. And people either weren't doing it, or they were just abandoning the dog, or having it put down, or whatever. So, you know, if you don't need a six-foot fence for a chihuahua, the committee can deal with that.
Okay.
So we're just trying to give more flexibility to the committee. We talked about an option of having the police make that determination finally and all that, and we decided that wouldn't the police function.
Right. So a dangerous dog could be a chihuahua biting me on my ankle or something?
It's a bad enough chihuahua.
Okay. All right. Cool.
I've been, we both have probably been chased by some little bitty dog. I've been tripped a few times.
More than the big ones.
I've been tripped a few times, let me tell you.
Yes, Councilman Marquet.
The Dangerous Animal Committee, that already exists, and I'm guessing that's the parish has that, or we have one?
No, we have that. We have that for the city because we need that for the dogs in the city, and we, Aaron's very involved in that, and we chair it, and they.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I thought that that was all gonna be the parish, that.
Nope. We have some things that they need to do once it's declared a dangerous dog, but no, that's to deal with our dogs.
Okay, then I have a question, too, about all the things that happen once a dog is considered dangerous. We had a situation in my neighborhood a few years ago where this dog was in the neighborhood, got out of its fence, bit someone else's dog. I shouldn't say bit it, attacked the dog. The dog was not previously considered dangerous until this incident. So with this ordinance, does that make it a domestic dog that has now turned to dangerous? And do they have to follow all these rules that are listed? How does that work? Like, I just, I don't understand. Once they're considered dangerous, like, is it another time they have to be vicious in some kind of way before they have to do all these other things? Like, the structure has to be a certain way? I just wasn't sure. The dog ended up disappearing out of our neighborhood, by the way. So no one knows what really happened to it. It's no longer there, which is, I'm glad it's not, but where is it now? You know?
Right.
I just don't know. Yeah, how does it work? You call because the dog bit somebody? Are they then considered dangerous, and then we have to follow?
The PD goes out, the PD takes the first step.
Okay.
The first step is to say, yes, we think it's a dangerous dog. If they don't say it's a dangerous dog, we didn't go any further. If the PD says we think it's a dangerous dog, all they do is kick it up to this committee. Then the committee convenes, and then the committee decides if it's a dangerous dog. If it's a dangerous dog, by the ordinance, there's a whole bunch of steps. It's gotta be quarantined so many days, this has to happen, that has to happen. And the animal control people have to work with us to make that happen. You know, like, we had one, one time, they just said, oh, we'll quarantine it at our house. I guess that's okay. I'd much rather it, if it's really a dangerous dog, to be at the dog pound where it belongs, because then maybe they don't get it back. But after they say it's dangerous, there are all kind of different steps, all the way up to euthanizing the dog. But that's what kicks it in, that's what starts it, then it goes to the process.
Okay, gotcha. So it all just kind of leads into the next step?
Went to the next step. Because if the PD doesn't declare it a dangerous dog, it ain't going any further. And ours is a judgment call at the very beginning, because what we're looking at is, did the dog, did somebody step on a dog's tail and took a snip? That's not a dangerous dog. That's an incident that happened. So when we make a judgment, that's something, maybe, that's where the committee comes in and defines it.
Okay, gotcha.
And chief, that would include biting a person or another animal? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We did have an incident recently. We had to clarify that because we had one of those. We had an incident recently where an animal ran into someone's home that wasn't its own and killed an animal inside.
Oh, wow.
So that was a whole scenario that we sent up to the committee. That was a dog murder.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know because I wasn't sure.
Good. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. I'm sorry, Jeff. Thank you all. Oh, Madam Clerk, 7B.
Introduction of ordinance 2021-27, an ordinance amending Article 7 of Chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to Sections 86, 261, and 86, 262, prohibiting certain activities in travel lanes, and to set for public hearing on January 4th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalat, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquette. Do we have discussion on this item?
Yeah, what is prohibited?
This item is to, we're very concerned about our traffic, our traffic lanes, and about people getting into the roadway, impeding the traffic, causing traffic accidents, harm to themselves or to other people. So this ordinance, we are trying to limit activity that people are drawn into the roadway because it's not safe.
Okay, this is what I was panhandling.
And anybody else who would get in the road? You know, it might not just, I don't want to.
Sometimes it's kids, trying to collect money for, you know, a game or something.
Various activities that people are on the side of the road, stopping traffic, or trying to get into the roadway.
Yeah.
Because you have that, I mean, you ride around, and I see people with buckets, I see people with other causes, I see kids. You know, it's just to try to limit our access to slowing down traffic and to letting people get into our roadways. Because most of our, as most communities, but we have tons of accidents at our intersections, or, you know, just even in the middle of the lane that people are jumping out for whatever reason. Yes, sir.
And the idea behind this is just to get that out of the travel lanes.
Right.
So, you know, we're not gonna, if somebody wants to stand on a street corner and ask for money, we really can't stop that.
No, and we're not trying to.
And if somebody wants to wave a political sign, we really can't stop that. But what we can stop, I think, is people giving things out of cars, and the people who are on the sidewalk stepping into the street to receive things. So we're just trying to keep people out of the street. Now, you know, I think we even say, nothing prevents people from giving from a parking place or a parking lot, or something like that. So if you want to give, pull over to some parking place and take care of it over there, but don't do it in the travel lanes. Because sooner or later, somebody's gonna get hit in the street. And then the person who waved the dollar bill, they're gonna get sued, and we got a mess.
I mean, I see the guys dressed up like the Statue of Liberty trying to give tax advice at the corner. You know, go pull in the parking lot and go talk to your buddy. I don't need that in the roadway, you know?
He can yell tax advice from the corner, we can't stop that.
No, but go pull in if you're gonna listen to it. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, just in regards to your comment, you know, since taking office as a mayor protem, is one of my most relevant complaints has been, and let's not target panel, but, you know, in the street activity. And I think, you know, we initiated the signs, and now we're making a greater step initiating, you know, public donations out of cars or windows. I think this council's moving in the right direction to make our intersection much, much safer. And we're already starting to see less panhandlers, if that's a direct reflection of the signs, you know? So we don't know that. But I think, you know, when the committee, when the community responds to something and sees where there's a problem, and you respond in these kind of actions, I think you're being proactive. And I think it's just, it's a good sign that we're moving in the right direction from a safety perspective.
Some other comments.
That doesn't, that won't, and I'm just trying to run some scenarios in my head. That's not gonna affect, like, when we do food giveaways, like, through the park, and we're handing out food. As people go drive slowly, we have that.
Because we have police officers, or that is an event that we have scheduled.
Okay.
And advertised, and we take precautions. Like, when we went, I mean, we've all been there giving out.
Right.
But we set up a lane to do that, we weren't, we were in the park, basically.
Right.
It wasn't like we tried to do that on the corner of Main and Lewis, or Admiral Dahl and Sinistri, you know? So we get to select the spots that happens, we get to advertise for that, and we have police. So that's something different. You know, this is the impromptu, for whatever reason, like I said, could be the tax guy, could be whatever, of people just causing a problem.
Okay.
It's a separate thing. That's a scheduled event, and something that we want. And like I said, if you notice, like, West End Park really works well. We did it in City Park at the Big Circle a few times. So, you know, we select that and control that environment.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, same with a parade. Same thing with, you know, we have offices, we put barricades up. That's a different, a different animal.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the question I have, so I'm seeing, I'm reading this ordinance, and I've read it over. You have it where it has cleaning and maintenance of a vehicle operating in a travel lane. So that's prohibited. So anyone that's cleaning their car on a neighborhood street, that's a violation.
Well, if you're in the middle of the road, it would be.
Well, not, I'm not saying the middle of the road. So what's the difference between that or an abandoned?
The travel, the travel lane.
Okay, so I got in a neighborhood, there's an abandoned car still sitting in the roadway. What's the difference between that, or someone cleaning?
Is it off to the side in a parking space up against a curb?
Nope, it's in the.
It's in the middle of the road.
Well, it's not in the middle of the road, it's in the lane, off to the side, not necessarily on the sidewalk.
But it's not blocking the traffic.
You gotta go around it.
If it's not busted, teal light or anything busted, you can't do anything about it.
You do have obstruction of a public roadway that, of course.
Yeah, if it's obstructing the roadway. But it's not blocking the lane. In other words, people park in front of their houses, people park on the side there, you know? Some people don't have driveways.
That's why I was asking, cleaning a vehicle.
I mean, that's if you like park it in the lane, you know?
Yeah.
We're worried about the squeegee man.
That's what I'm talking about.
Exactly.
That could be, that could be the squeegee man.
Okay. Okay. I was just brainstorming with this.
That's why we.
We've been on ordinances all night, you know, so.
I know, it was kind of a fun night. Any other discussion on this item? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Okay. Oh, the next one's fun, 7C. We see if we want to start all over again. It's on the agenda for people that don't know. It's the noise ordinance, in case we were gonna do something. So Jeff, do we just not act, do we just strike it from the agenda?
Keep moving.
Okay, we keep moving, all right? Because we start over, y'all.
No.
Okay. So we will skip 7C. And we will go on to item eight.
Future ordinance committee issues to address, the prohibition of smoking indoors.
Want to call on Councilwoman Deedee Leibert?
For some time, we've been discussing amongst ourselves becoming a smoke-free city, as is many in the area, Lafayette is, Abbeville, New Orleans. I mean, it's from metropolitan areas to little towns. So in the past, some years ago, it was brought up, and nothing happened with, in the previous administration, not under our mayor. But it's something that I think, and I hope some of my fellow councilmen think that it's time for New Iberia to become a smoke-free city. And of course, in what was given to you, it's just a sample. And I have other samples of it where they have some exceptions, because there's always some exceptions to the rule if you have, like, possibly a cigar bar. You know? And it's really a cigar bar, not just a place where you think you can go and drink and whatever. You know, it's a cigar bar, where you buy cigars and you smoke them there and all. So it's certain stipulations about that. So wanted to get some feedback from the council. I know you all have met with Renee Stansberry, and she got some good feedback from most of the council members. And what we wanted to do was get some ideas from you, and really see where you are with it, because she was from the first ordinance we did with the noise. It's evolved into several different things, and that was a lot of work put into it. So before we really start working, seriously working on this, we want to get some input from the full council.
Is it our turn to talk?
So, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm all for it. I don't think that you should smoke indoors. It's bad for the people that work there and other patrons that are non-smokers. I mean, as well as the smokers. We're really behind on the times, I think, you know, as far as all the other cities around us. So I do think it is time to put this into effect here.
I agree with Councilman Marquette. I mean, I just feel like we need to do this. Most of you probably know, my brother, my only brother, actually died of lung cancer in 2019 at 61 years old. And so, and it was from smoking. He smoked since he was a teenager. And so I'm all for trying to discourage young people, older people, from smoking, and trying to hold on to their health as long as they can.
Yeah, ma'am, I'm in agreement as well. I mean, the largest lawsuit on record right now, $500 billion or $500 million was from the tobacco industry. People dying of lung cancer from smoking, the cigarette companies didn't do this. So I think we're about public health and safety. I mean, I'm all for it. I've heard people in the past, I've had people already, when Renee started, I think David might have, or David Mayra introduced it some years ago. He got some, you know, he got some flack from the, from the community, a lot of nightclub owners and bar people, you know, bar people, bar patrons, they, you know, they don't want to take away their smoking. I remember when they went through it in Lafayette, flopping them guys on Simcoe. They didn't want, you know, they didn't want smoking to leave, but, I mean, Boo Jordanum stood, and other people stood, and they decided, you know, and it's okay. You know, I don't want to go to nightclubs much, but, you know, it's gonna be all right. I mean, it's, you know, it's a life-saving, life-saving endeavor we getting into when we talk about eliminating smoke in public places. I'll never forget, I'll say this, and I first, my first time flying, I went to, I went, well, not my first time, my first time going to LAX. And me and my friend, he was from Los Angeles, and, man, I looked in a cell tax, and it was dark yellow. They were able to smoke in that room. And that's just how bad smoking, you know, is, man. I'd never seen that in my life. They had a terminal or a smoking room, it was a smoking room. The airport was at so packed, we had to go in there. And I saw that, I said, man, the whole, everything else was white, every other room, except for that room. Yes, I mean, it tells people that who don't even smoke, so.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
You can go if you want.
See, I'm, you know, I'm hearing the comments of the council, and I'm all for discussion, but at the same time, I think it's a choice by business. I think you choose to implement the rules you want for your clientele. I think you choose to smoke if you want to choose. Nobody forces you to smoke. So it's a choice. So I think government's overreaching its boundaries by implementing something, because I think, give the businesses their choice. You don't see smoking in Walmart, you don't see smoking in stage, you don't see smoking in public business, because it's not proactive or indicative to their business model. So I think businesses should give the choice. And I think they're making, most of them are making the right choice, because most of them are not smoking facilities. Look across, name a facility that you can go in, can't go and get in and not smoke. You can't go, so most of them have made that choice on their own to be proactive towards their business model. So I think all this resolution is, is are you targeting bars and saloons? That's what you're targeting. Let them make their choice. And some of the bars are making choices now not to smoke in them. So, I mean, that's my position, but I'm open for discussion and listening to all the input.
Dustin, Councilman Swer.
Yeah, I don't, look, I agree, smoking is bad for you. You know, but at the same time, like Ricky pointed out, it's a choice that the establishment owner should make for themselves, in my opinion. I, I'm thankful that it's not in restaurants anymore. I mean, yeah, because my children go to restaurants with me. My child's not gonna come into a bar, not gonna come into a cigar shop, not gonna come into a saloon, all those other things. So I believe it's not our duty to tell a certain, like, look, there's some in town that they don't want in their buildings. That's fine, that's great. But if the ones that are okay with it, they're gonna lose customers, and they're gonna go to another place, or go to another parish, and that's revenue that they're gonna lose. So based on, based on how, how, I'm gonna say this. I don't want to make that decision for that private business owner. I don't think that's my job, and I don't believe government should do the same. That's my opinion, so, thank you.
I see you, but anybody else? Broussard, go ahead. Okay, that's all, and then I'll go back to you, now everybody got a change.
It's hard for everybody up here to be dictators about everything. I don't smoke. I don't care to go places where they are smoking right now. But most of the places, they don't smoke. Restaurants, you know, a lot of what the people think we're dictators on everything that comes up. So I think we left with almost only bars that smoke right now inside. And if you want to go to the bar, you might get caught with this, after the smoke. But it's, uh, I don't want to be called a dictator up here. Everything we doing is, uh, you know, going to be this way or the highway. So, um, I'm with you all a little bit on this, goes. It's weird. I don't want to be called a dictator on everything we doing to say you can't do this and you can't do that. You know, there are people that smoke for ninety years, you know, a long time, oh, man. But I don't believe in it. I don't smoke. I don't want to, I don't want to get caught with a secondhand smoke wherever I go, but I dictate where I go not to get involved in that. You know, there are places that have gladly said no smoking. But I don't want to be a total dictator up here and tell people what they have to do and can't do.
Uh, back to you, everybody had the flu.
Yes, uh, I just want to say, no, uh, we're not dictators, but we are, um, lawmakers for our city. And I think very much if Lafayette, which has a whole lot more night activity than here in New Iberia, all downtown is pretty much bars. And they're a smoke-free city. Shreveport has umpteen casinos between Shreveport and Boja City. They're a smoke-free city also. So what's so different about our little town, you know, becoming in step with what's going on now? We, we not trying to be dictators, but we are trying to protect other people, uh, from dangerous smoke. Even though I, I'm, I might be invited to go to a nightclub to a birthday party or something. I don't smoke. I might choose to go, but it would be nice if people weren't smoking there. You know? It really would be. I would be more inclined to go if I knew people wouldn't be smoking there. And pretty much the statistic goes that when you become a smoke-free city, your business doesn't, it doesn't really affect your business, because those people that are going to go there are going to go anyway. If they have to go outside and smoke like they do at work, they will do that. And, um, I think because, uh, because it's a healthy thing to do, um, we need to seriously, you know, go for this now. Now is the time to do this. Especially with COVID out, right now and everything, you know? People already have problems with their lungs from the disease and all. Smoke just adds to it.
I'll be honest with you, I came from a community where you couldn't even smoke in your car. I mean, like, you can't have kids in the car and you're smoking, because that's against the law. And I'm not saying that we have to go that far, but I do think that if, from a health perspective, um, you know, sometimes we have to make the tough decisions. And that's a tough decision, but it's for the betterment of the community. And that's what lawmakers do.
All right, well, this was a good discussion.
So in the near future, the committee, um, will bring, um, an ordinance back to the group for your consideration.
I wondered if, I wonder how, I'm just asking, I mean, I tell you all everything. We, uh, we did it as a discussion item. Do we, do we vote? Do we, I mean, I didn't put it on the agenda to vote on anything, but, uh, I mean, after I discuss, is it ama- is it, is it the near, okay, we have one, two, three, four that want it and three that don't? So is that, I mean, I, we, we've never been divided on anything. We've had five years that we've all, you know, my last council, this council, we've all been together on every issue. So, I mean, I understand that we can't always be that way. So when we're going to bring something to the ordinance committee after a discussion, should I put it on? I'm asking, should I put it on as a resolution next time and we vote for it to go to the ordinance committee? Is that, is that how we, we got to come up with a, with a way and a system that, you know?
No.
Not going to agree that we can move forward.
Mayor, in the past, we just kind of got the consensus of the group and we started working on it if it was a yes from the majority.
Well, we never didn't have, we, this is the first opposition I've had, I mean, I'm just saying, uh, I deal with issues as they come up. As the guy who runs the team, this is the first time we've had a split that it's four to three on an issue. I mean, I know it's going to come, it's not, it's not the end of the world, but I, I would like something in place that, I just want to have a discussion about it, of how we deal with it. Because I don't, what I, what I want to do is spend, I watched the, the garage sale ordinance was in total good intent, okay? And y'all worked on that for months, and I'm at every one of those ordinance committee meetings, so I put time in too, we all did. And then it got back here and, and we wasted months. So I, I'm just saying, I kind of think I need a formal way that when we bring a discussion item, if everybody, if it's a unanimous thing, we just say, great, work on it. If it's not, we probably do need a procedure that says, okay, because the council took this action, we're moving. Because I don't want to ever have something, if one person changes their mind and we spend two or three months working on this and bringing it back. And it's New Iberia, we're going to craft whatever we do, and, and I got a great group. I am confident, whatever we work on, we're going to craft it for New Iberia. Because where are we from? There's people we represent. So we're going to have some quirks. I love my town, you know? I'm like Austin, keep New Iberia weird. We, we do a lot of things differently. So I don't want to spend months on something and we really tweak it for us and everything, then we get here and by one vote it doesn't pass. I, I, I feel like I, I didn't be the leader I'm supposed to be and I didn't manage our time, because we have tons of things to work on. So I'm just asking, in the future, do you think we put it and then we vote on it to say, I mean, I can't make you vote tonight, because we don't have a, we don't have a resolution to say vote, but I would like to be formal when we don't agree, if that makes any sense.
So I have to a question?
Yeah, sure.
So if one person changes their mind, then it's going to be four, three, I guess the other way, right?
Yeah, it could be.
Okay, so where do you stand on this? Because it sounds like you don't want it. No, 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 that's, I didn't say that. No, no, no. No, no, don't.
But that's what it sounds like almost.
No, no. I'm just asking your opinion.
If I voted on it, I would, I'm, I really feel that I would leave it up to the businesses, hundred percent. But I don't vote. I voted if there's, if there's a tie. You know, if somebody skips the meeting, I get to vote, which I've gotten to do a couple of times. But, uh, my personal opinion, I side more on let the businesses decide, because we only, I was trying to think, where do we have smoking? We really only have it in bars. In other words, you can't come in any government building and smoke. You can't smoke in any restaurant. You can't smoke, uh...
But isn't that, well, let me ask you a question. Isn't that reason enough to say, let's not smoke anywhere? Because we've, you, you've eliminated all the different, you said all the places where we can't smoke.
Right.
So let's just say, no, you can't smoke in these buildings, period. Because if you just have one exception in all the other places, you're saying, no, we're not, the health, your health means something to me and I'm not going to let you smoke in here.
My view is each entity made its own decision. Nobody made anybody do everywhere that we don't have smoking. There's no law, you know, in many instances, people just decided not to do it.
Well, now, the government buildings, the government.
Yeah, the government bill, well, but government decided, somebody decided, yeah.
Right.
But like at, uh, if you go shopping somewhere, or if you go, those people decided.
Well, in Lafayette, the city did.
The city did.
The city said, you can't do that in the, so you can't smoke in their malls.
I'm not saying we can't do that.
No, 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 I know, I was, I hear you, Freddie. I was just trying to get your opinion. I didn't know where you said, you, you sit on this whole issue. That's why I was asking the question.
Right, I voted, I think I voted no far when I was the mayor pro temp.
Okay, I, yeah, I was here, yeah.
Uh, I know you weren't here.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm just a, I try to be as free as I can and say, okay, you put the money up, that's your mortgage, that's your business, you work there every day and hopefully you make a profit, but I've run businesses before, it's hard to make a profit. So my attitude, when I think I'm going to affect somebody's business, I really try to err on, okay, what do you want to do? As much as I can. Not if they hurting somebody immediately, automatically, but a guy that smokes in a bar is going to go home and smoke. And if he made that personal choi- I hate smoking. I, I mean, I can't, I, it, it, I can't do it. But if you make that choice to smoke and you're going to smoke at a bar, you're going to smoke at your house, you're going to smoke everywhere, we all know it damages you, a hundred percent. But if that's the choice somebody makes...
But, but it's not just damaging them, it's damaging the people that are there as well.
Nobody's making you go to that, if it's a bar, okay?
Right.
Nobody's making you go. I don't go to bars where people smoke. I don't really go to bars a lot, but if I go, I'm not going to one that, that I don't, I don't like the way it smells, I, I hate it, I don't like the way my clothes smell after, I don't have any hair to say, I don't like the way my hair smells. I used to, but, uh, so I, I don't go. And that's my choice, so they don't get my dollar. And my attitude is, I just regulated you with my dollar, because I didn't give it to you. And I went down the road to get my one beer for the, for the two months' time, uh, my one Michelob light, uh, I go get it at someplace that doesn't smoke. So that's my personal opinion. But I don't really try to, thanks for asking me, because there's a lot of times I want to tell you, you know that big, but I try not to, because I'm supposed to just run the meeting, I'm supposed to.
No, I know, I just was wondering where, where your opinion was on this.
I'm more on the issue of, we're going to keep bringing these, I love my ordinance committee, they do great work. I want a procedure for whatever the issue is. This is the first one we've been, and I guess it's a big deal for me, because five years in, how blessed am I that we never have an issue that we're divided on? That, that is amazing. So when we have one, I just want a procedure in place, no matter what it is.
But mayor, you did put the procedure in place, whereas it would come up for discussion first, to see whether people stood. Right now, you have four people that said yes.
Okay.
Three people that said no.
I just threw it out there.
So therefore, the majority said, we're going to go with this further.
Okay.
Pretty much.
When do we hear, well, I guess in the ordinance process is when you want to hear from the public? Because we do have to hear from the public.
I suggest we're going to hear from them once they see this on YouTube or TV.
The public hearing starting after they see this, but it's very important to hear from the public.
Absolutely.
You know? Because that's why we're here. All right, I knew, I knew I started a discussion, but I mean, we need to, yes, sir.
Yeah, we, I, I agree, we need to have a discussion. So prime example, so any individual that owns a tobacco shop or a liquor store, and they choose to have a cigarette in their building, because it's their building, it's their business, so we basically telling them that they can't do it. That's what I don't believe in. You know, that's like saying, okay, Dr. Pepper, we know Dr. Pepper's not good for you, when we drink it all the time, and, but we're not going to go ban Dr. Pepper, or, does that make any sense?
Yes.
Not really.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure it out, I'm trying to figure, I just don't, the point is, the point is, I'm trying to make, like I was Ricky, I don't believe in government telling a private business what they should do. I get it, smoking's bad for you, but we make the choice to go into it, they make the choice whether they want to have it or not, and that's, that's the way, in my eyes, that's the way it should be. But everybody has opinions, we all, we here having a discussion about it.
Yeah.
So that's just the way I feel.
Good, good. And don't forget, I'm calling everybody, don't forget we have a process, because if it goes to an ordinance, no matter what it is, an ordinance is passed by having, introducing it, having public hearing, getting the press here, putting it in the newspaper, the TV does a great job for us, uh, the radio does a great job of playing our meetings back. So, you know, the whole point is to be transparent and to get, what happened here earlier tonight over the noise ordinance, I enjoyed it. That should happen on all our order, on anything we do, because you're right, we make, we lawmakers, on a little bitty small scale. But whatever comes to us, I love the fact that the public comes out and we get those opinions, because we'll, we modify off of, that's who we represent. So I, I don't want anybody to think, no matter what we end up doing on anything, just remember, we do have a system and, and we, we do listen to people and we all do. I, I totally recognize, we all represent, each one of you represent about five thousand people. Uh, and as a whole, as a group, as four votes or more, we represent everybody. So it's, uh, you know, I don't want anybody to think we, we, there is a process.
More than that, Hannah.
Oh, yes, sir. I didn't, I didn't even know.
I like the elephant in the room, and I like to put it there, Jose, advocate.
Yes, you do.
So Ricky, if we don't shut them down with cigarettes, we're going to shut them down with the noise ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Both of them.
Both of them, you, you're going to go.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, government...
Government overreach.
You're starting to overemphasize your rule on businesses.
Right.
By, by implementing rules over rules, and sooner or later, they're going to say, you know what? New Iberia, I'm gone. And then you lose your tax.
You go to Lafayette, it's the same thing, same thing.
Both of them are overreaching, right? Okay.
Go to Lafayette and you can't smoke over there either.
Even New Orleans is bad, really.
Last term, we had all the bar owners in here about the same thing. Was it last term or term before, term?
No, this, we...
What they went here for last term with the bars?
That wasn't, that wasn't us?
It wasn't smoking?
No, that was a lot of... Yeah.
That wasn't this term.
No, the term before.
No, sir.
We had them up here before, boy, you got to see a bunch.
Yeah, it wasn't when I was the mayor, not since I've been the mayor.
Well...
I'm sure they come and they welcome to come, but it wasn't since I was the mayor.
So we have to go through all that with them in here before we have a vote?
Yeah, of course, because it's a public, that's what I was saying earlier, it's part of our process.
They'll be in here by droves.
Yeah. But that's a good thing. I mean, you know, I, I, I want public input. Yes, ma'am?
So we tell people and businesses what to do all the time. That's what we do. They have to pay taxes, you know, they have to get permits for certain things. That is what we do. It also levels the playing field for these barrooms, if that's what we're going to say it is. If you have some that say, oh, you can smoke here, others say no, well, if they all are non-smoking, they're all the same now. So now it doesn't matter, there's no competition, go wherever you want, you know, because there's not one that's allowing smoking and one that's not. That's just my opinion on it.
Yes, sir.
So Brooke, if you eliminate smoking in all the bars, what are the people going to smoke going to do? They're going to go outside on the street, on the sidewalk, they're going to start lauding, they're going to start smoking, having activity on the street, right? And you got another problem you got to address.
That's what they do at work.
I, I got the floor.
One of the top, one of the top.
I got the floor. So then, you call the police, now we got a crowd on the street, now you created another problem. So just remember, you, you, you're doing one thing to benefit one cause, and a greater cause might be more than what you can handle later date. Let the businesses choose what they want to do. And to address your...
I knew you was going to...
We didn't eliminate the noise totally.
Right.
We set a limit. You're eliminating totally smoking from the business. So there's a difference, a difference. So that's my difference, my opinion.
Well, technically, we're not...
I, I got the floor, Dee.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Second time I tell you, I got the floor.
No, it wasn't me. That I was mean.
Now to address your concern on the protocol. If you're going to bring up a discussion item to this council and you get a verbal census of what's what, and Dee said no matter, she's bringing it up no matter what we decide to do, so what is the, you know, what is the, if we'd have had four that said no, would Dee, not, Deidra, not bring it up from the ordinance committee? Or how would that work?
That's why, that's why I posed the question. In other words, we have that machine up there and we got buttons for a reason, so that we can get an opinion, okay? And I can get, I like an opinion, that's what I want to do, that's what we hear, that's what we hear, that's why we pass everything. So for me, like I said, this is fun, this is the first time in five years I've had some division. I, I can either count, and I guess that's all I was telling y'all. In other words, I'm going to look at it and say, this is my job to, to run the meeting and to keep us a team. So the way I'm going to look at it is, one, two, three, four, four to three, we bring it to the ordinance committee. But if, if it was the other way and it was four to three that they didn't, that we didn't want it, I wouldn't bring it, I'd say, don't bring it.
Right.
But I'm making that decision after we have a discussion, which is no different than using the machine. But if you would rather, in other words, if we want to do this more formally, because we might have some division on some things, there's nothing wrong with that. Maybe, and that's why I brought it up, when I start to see that we're going to have this, maybe in the future, we should have a discussion and we should do it as a resolution to go to the ordinance committee, and then we vote and we got a record of it. Because now what we have down the road is, oh, Freddie counted, you know, we don't do that with anything else. So if you, I'm not going to change the count, we got it on video, if you trust me to do it that way, then I'm going to do it, because I brought it to get an opinion, okay? But this is the first time that I have a divided opinion. So I will just count, and my, my thing is, if you bring something to go to the ordinance, any one of you can say, I want to bring something to the ordinance committee, any council member. So, if you want to bring an issue, I just want to be clear that they are in some support for that before we spend two or three months, as we did one time, and I'd beaten it up. But as we did one time, we spent months on something and, and it wasn't, it didn't turn out, you know, to fruition. So, I just want a pulse on what we're doing. Yes, councilmen swear.
Thank you. Deidre, the, uh, my question's for you. So, if it was flipped, so if it was four, like you was saying earlier, that were against doing that, and it was three for it, you know, you, you brought this up as a discussion item, you said on the ordinance committee, you would feel like dropping the whole thing if it was a flip deal, or you'd actually, no, we still need to bring it to the ordinance committee?
No, we wouldn't, because that, that's pretty much the way that the mayor set it up when it happened with the garage sale thing.
Right.
We hadn't brought that up for discussion. So, the mayor says, so this won't happen again.
Yeah.
We gonna put it down for discussion to see if there's, um, a, a taste for it.
If it has a pulse.
Yeah.
If it has a pulse, because if it's dead, I don't want to do it. And look, I never, if you ask me my opinion, oh, I'mma tell you. But I don't bring any of these issues, you never see me saying, I don't, I don't like this, but I'm bringing it. I'm not gonna do that. So, I just wait and see. But, uh, I, this is what I'm trying to see. Does it ha, is it dead or does it have a pulse?
It has a pulse.
It has a pulse.
It has a pulse.
Yes, sir. Uh, I'mma call, I was calling Jeff. Hang on, Mr. Bruce, Jeff.
I think, it sounds like people want to see this again in some form. Uh, I don't plan to spend a lot of time on it. Because I don't want to, you know, get to the end of that trail and it'd just be me and Richard Phillips again. And Dee was with that too.
He's not here to defend himself.
No, but I mean, that, that, that garage sale thing was too much time spent on something people didn't want. I think there's some interest in this.
Yeah, I do too.
I think we can take it up. There are a lot of different, uh, kind of canned ordinances here that other people have prepared. So, I don't, I don't spend, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, even though I'm a coin-operated attorney, right? I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, and, um, you know, we'll see what we can do. If there are some pieces of it that people want to particularly object to, for example, I think there's something in here that says businesses have to post signs, no smoking if you're affected by the ordinance. That's everybody. You know, so everybody's gonna have to post signs? I mean, take a look at it and see, maybe we can take some of the burden off, off businesses, even if we adopt it. But, it sounds to me like we push it forward.
The only thing about the signs, the, the, um, the smoke-free people furnish the signs, so it's not an expense for the business owner.
Yeah, but if the business owner doesn't post it, then he's in trouble even if nobody's smoking, right? I mean, I think we need to take a look at all the different parts.
We can look at the different parts. I don't have a problem with that.
So, yeah, and, you know, someday, we may disagree here. It just may happen.
It's not, it's not a bad thing, everybody's thinking.
Yeah.
I just like procedure and like to talk about it, because it's, uh, it's a new thing. Uh, did.
So, smoke, smoke-free pays for every single sign for every business in every community?
Yep.
Okay, that's a question I had, I don't know. Even though it's not, even if the business owner doesn't want the sign on his building, they still have to put it?
Well, it depends on how we write the ordinance.
Yeah.
If we say it has to be posted, then they would have to post it.
Okay.
Done?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bruce, hard.
Indoors. Is there a law that people can't smoke in their own house? You know, you got indoors, you better specifically say whatever you're looking at, because you could have a whole mess of people in there too.
This allows you to smoke in your house.
It does. I, I just said indoors.
Yeah, well, we hadn't got into it yet.
Prohibited from smoking indoors. But.
Well, I mean, Dee told me this place, you can't smoke in your car, so that's a legitimate question.
Yeah, you can't. I mean, especially if you're children, and you're not allowed to do that.
I didn't realize that.
I'm pretty sure Louisiana has it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Is there a designated smoking area here for smokers outside? I know at the hospital I work at, that's what they have, Mr. Ricky.
I guess I'm gonna have to have one. I know where they do smoke, and if it has to be by this ordinance, they gonna be walking to the by, which means more wasted time by people. They need to get their butts back to work. Uh, as a guy who's run people his whole life, I hated crews that smoked. Man, my crews that smoked, I hated them. I was like, y'all are late, you know, I get, I get twenty minutes less a day out of y'all. I always wanted to keep them overtime because they smoked, but anyway, so. But no, I don't think we have one, and I guess I would have to if this passes.
I don't think you have to. No, I don't think that's part of this ordinance at all.
Gives you a distance from a building.
Yeah.
Does it? Okay, well.
You can have the distance, and, and it can be whatever we want it to be.
Right, right, right by the doors and go back to work.
You have to build a canopy out there with the bikes that gets out of the weather.
That's not happening.
I do think that, um, if you, if you make a move away, because walking out of a business and the employee standing there smoking.
I knew it wouldn't, I knew it wouldn't be right by the door.
Right. And, and to comment, to, to, to go back and comment on Ricky's thing about people congregating, it don't take that long to smoke a cigarette, you know? Five, ten minutes and they back in the club. They not gonna stand out there, and if there are two or three people, we're not gonna have twenty-five people out there. And if we do, they won't be out there long. The thing is, is that we're trying to protect the health of everybody, of everybody. So, that's why it's important.
Okay. You had a question?
Yeah, so, DeeDee, so are there any rules on the book that govern smoking? Can I go smoke in City Park, walk in smoking City Park while I'm walking outside?
Here in New Iberia?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
I don't know, do we? I mean, in Atlanta, you're not supposed to.
It's outdoor park.
Yeah, but it depends. We can't smoke in the parks.
Wait, wait, no, let's go on.
You can jog and smoke at the same time.
Yeah. When we, I'm just asking. So, when we build your new park on Ann Street, our new parking, and there's somebody smoking while the kids are playing, what are you gonna do?
You need to put that cigarette out.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, wait, you gonna put a sign that says no smoking on?
Yes, no smoking on the, on, on the park.
All the city parks, or you just gonna do one?
Hey, you know what? If we, if we pass the ordinance and we say that we, that you cannot smoke around areas where the kids are, then yes, there will be a sign saying no smoking in this area, and it will be enforced.
So.
Because there, this, it's about health and safety, it's not about trying to infringe on people's rights.
I'm just asking, so if you're gonna do it for the new pocket park on Ann Street, or you're gonna do it for City Park, you do it West End, you gonna do it for all the parks?
Oh, our ordinances will be cohesive for everybody.
Yeah.
Not, so they, so you're gonna make parks, you're gonna make public parks or no smoking zone?
Hey, I would be all for that.
If that's the way it goes.
That's not far-fetched though, Rick, you see.
Just asking, I just a question.
Let me give y'all, let me give y'all something. Heather?
Yeah.
We do have signage. We do have signage, and the.
We have designated areas in the parks.
Right, the best part about the Ann Street park is gonna be enclosed, so you can have a sign that says no smoking inside of this park. The, um, the newest.
Through the, through the chain link.
At City Park, it has the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we do designate.
I got the floor, but I just think now, this, this ordinance is becoming, you know, from public buildings now to city parks, now what else? It's just becoming a real, really forty, for outreach, you know, and in my opinion. So, it needs a lot of work, a lot of massage.
Right. Can I say?
Yes, sir.
This, and, and I, I always stop here, I hope, but probably not. But that's not far-fetched, man, you can travel around the country, man, they got non-smoking campuses up. That is not far-fetched, for smoking, particularly smoking. That, that's not far-fetched. You see that all over the country, no smoking in parks, no smoking on, on, uh, trying to think of other places that are public that you can't, they don't, you can't smoke.
Yeah, I mean.
It's just something about our culture, man. It's just something about our culture. What we've been doing outside forever, no matter if it's been killing us or not, we still want to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, he actually said what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Well, this is another good discussion, and now I got a little procedure. So, when we bring things in the future, I'll just do the poll after, and we'll figure out if we moving with them or we're not. But, uh, all good with me? I have one other thing that if you will allow me, I would like the police chief, this is just fun, so I'm gonna move to councilman's remarks. But I'll start with myself, and I'mma yield my time to the chief, okay? That's a new move. With this, I just wanted y'all to see what our police has been up to concerning community policing. I think, and, and I don't want to wait till after Christmas, so that's why I needed to do this. Chief?
See, getting it cranked up.
Yes, um, and obviously, the, the mayor was heavily involved in this, this project with us. Um, we partnered with Walmart, Chick-fil-A, Iberia Parish School System, the Catholic High School and Highland Baptist did a toy drive in the, in the city. Uh, part of it was, was to reach out to kids, and then we collected over a thousand toys and over two thousand dollars in cash, and donations that were collected. Uh, from, now, the thousand dollars, the two thousand dollars collected from the Fraternal Order of Police, uh, New Iberia High School, and, uh, and also a donation for one of our offices, donated a thousand dollars towards Shop With A Cop. So, we kind of did two phases. One, we had, and I think that, that you may have seen Santa Claus on a float riding through town, giving out toys. We had addresses that were given to us. I know some of the city council members, and, and if we neglected to get to some of the kids you gave a list on, please let us know. We do have some toys left over. We will get to those. Um, so, some of the ones we got didn't have phone numbers where we can contact the parents to ask whether the kids would be home or not. So, over the past two days, Santa Claus made his rounds to the houses that we were given as kids that were less fortunate, that might not have, uh, Christmas as, uh, maybe some kids that were more fortunate. So, we tried to hit as many as we could. We had over, probably over two hundred names. So, we went kind of as many as we could get to. Um, and on today, at ten AM, we had Shop With A Cop. Uh, Walmart also contributed some, some monies towards that along with the other organizations. Uh, and after we did Shop With A Cop, we impacted eleven kids there. We went to Chick-fil-A after, where the officers sat down with the families and those kids and shared a meal. And provided, provided for us by the owner of Chick-fil-A. So, we appreciate that contribution from there. The, uh, obviously, we, we impacted over three hundred children. Uh, the ones that were out there, you can see that, and there's some slides, slides of the kids that, that, some of the kids that we touched. The smiles on faces of our kids in our community was, was really overwhelming. I've been getting text messages from the officers that were involved, uh, that helped, and you'll see a slide on that too. Sergeant Deja Hughes, who is our PIO, most have had an opportunity to, to meet and see on TV. Uh, her and, and we kind of call them Deja's Angels, Melinda Bernard, Melinda Myers are two juvenile officers that work under her. Uh, they wrapped all these gifts and put a whole plan together of addresses and where to go to, and, and had a whole list of stuff, and they worked tirelessly because they, you know, the, the impact that, that they make on, that we make on children from our department's perspective was what our goal was. We want our, and, and it's what we preached when I came here and, and accepted the job and, and was, uh, ratified by, by this council. Uh, community policing is what we preach, and we want to make sure that the kids in our community see us as someone that they can approach, and someone that's there for them. You know, as we grow as a community, we want to continue to do missions like this. This is our inaugural, uh, ride. Now, obviously, we're gonna get better, because the things that maybe we felt that we could be better at doing this, um, we're gonna grow it next year and only make it bigger and better, because we want to touch as many kids as we can. And this was kind of a condensed version, because, uh, me and Deja had gotten together, um, only about a month ago about this. Uh, when I got with her and I said, how, what can we do to really impact, and, and she came up with a list of a bunch of things, and one of them was Shop With A Cop. We kind of evolved that to something I did when I was, uh, police chief in Jennings, where we rode Santa Claus through town and actually went to the addresses to deliver, deliver, uh, gifts to the homes of the, you know, kids that wouldn't have. And Bill will sit down on Santa's lap, take pictures, do all those things that they may not have an opportunity to do, because of, you know, whether it's economic issues, or whatever it may be. They can't get to a mall or to a shopping center where Santa Claus is. We're bringing Santa to you. We're giving you an opportunity to, to have that, that touch, because, you know, one of the last houses we, the mayor and I made the corner, um, one of the kids said, uh, see, you know, buy Santa, you know. You, you get to see those things of kids really being impacted by having that opportunity to see what the holiday is all about with Christmas, you know, Christmas spirit. So, um, you know, we, we, this was a big thing, and I think there's probably a, a, a play button, there's little short clips, um, you know, kind of the, the Santa Claus float. And you go to the next one, and you gotta kind of tab it a couple times. And there, there should be a clip on that. And there's Deja dancing.
That was cool.
You got, kept it a couple times. There you go, that's another, you know, it just, the smiles on these, on these children's faces and. It, it says it all, you know, and, and when you see this, and, and just an opportunity to, to share, um, you know, the gifts that come from schools and, and parents that, that contribute. We thank the, the many parents that, uh, that gave to the schools and, uh, and gave us an opportunity to go out and give these toys to each other.
Hey!
Uh, these are some of the slides from some of the pictures we took, uh, as we, you know, led off from, from the front bill and cliff or cramp bill and, and loaded up the floats with, with toys. You see the boxes that, tho, those boxes of toys there are for the kids when we go to a house and there's other children come out of other houses. We didn't neglect them. We wanted to have toys on board for those. For the children that, that maybe weren't on the list, but they showed up. We weren't gonna let, not let Santa give out gifts to every kid that showed up at our floats.
You'd watch a kid run from two blocks away, get two toys and then run home with them, and I mean, it was just, it was neat.
Yeah, I bet.
This was the, the after meal at Chick-fil-A after the Shop With A Cop today. Um, you know, it's just, it, it's the smiles from the kids that, that we're, you know, we're serving. We serve these kids. There'll be, there'll be adults running our cities one day, so it's an opportunity for us to reach out. Even the, the mayor and the chief had a low, a low, uh, love, and of course, Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Joseph was there with us. Uh, Ms. Joseph is, is, works well, and, and just, we, we do a lot together with, with our schools. So, really proud of the relationships we built with our school system and, and our SROs in there. You'll see as it goes on, just the, uh, they'll see some kids with Santa as she goes through some of the slides. There are some of the kids.
And Santa's one of our officers.
That, that is Officer James Smith, who, uh, actually one of our traffic cops.
Yeah.
He's the one, if, if you go to our Facebook page, uh, we, we doing once a month spotlighting an officer. He was our first spotlighted officer. If you want to kind of learn a little more about him, go to our Facebook page, and you'll be able to see his interview with K E N E.
Okay.
And really, really genuine person and cares about our community. And you see it in, in what he does. He dressed up, you know, he obviously is Santa Claus and, and, uh, the kids really took to him and, and just a, you know, it's, it's a moment that, you know, I'm humbled by, by kind of, you know, it's why I got in this profession. You know, it's, it's what we do. Um, so, th, this is kind of a, uh, this was the Shop With A Cop where our officers, uh, lined up the baskets and the kids came, and they picked a, picked one of our offices, and they went out and did a shopping tour and, and got, each child got a hundred fifty dollars worth of toys.
Nice.
So, uh, we take a lot of, a lot of, this is a, a very proud moment. So, and it's our family to yours. So, Merry Christmas. And, uh, on a personal note, uh, I, I know that, uh, kind of my situation, the mayor knows my situation health-wise. I, I, November first was my first day back from, uh, dealing with battling cancer for a second time. Um, I was out for four and a half, five months where I had, uh, deal treatments and surgery, and, uh, it had spread to, to, uh, to my liver and, and had that taken out at MD Anderson. Uh, kind of a proud moment today that my scan was, uh, last Monday, and my scan is clear. And, uh, the, they do what's called a cell marker work, where they look for the, the cancer cells, and that came back clear too. So, you may be stuck with me for a while.
All right, now.
Congratulations.
I'm, I'm very blessed, and, and God has blessed me beyond, you know, what we sometimes deserve, and, and, you know, his love is, is pretty obvious. And, you know, and coming back to my second family here, uh, you know, and serving this city with the officers that we have, and it's a prideful moment being able to share it with kids and, and, and doing things in our community. So, we're gonna do more community policing events, you're gonna see a lot more coming from us.
Yep.
Uh, we want, we, we will get, not want, we will get more involved in, in the community outreach stuff, and you'll see more from us. And, uh, he, uh, the mayor, not to gloat to, to this horn, but one of his biggest things is to make sure that we connect. We're gonna do another walking in their future.
Yep.
Um, because we don't do this, and, and this, this will be on Facebook and be on Channel Ten tonight. But, part, part of maybe what we did poor job of a period of time was, we don't get the media involved with us, because we're not doing it for the media aspects. I, I'm not running for office, and I've learned him well enough that he just does what he does. Um, you know, we don't do it for the media attention. We go out and, we did walks before where we didn't bring the media with us.
We told them we're gonna fire them if they put it on Facebook, which I guess was the oppo, you know, if you're gonna have community police, and I'm morphing a little bit and realize it, but the, the other walks.
We're gonna have to do some of that to let the community know that we are doing it. So, we're gonna, we're gonna share a little more time, maybe make our, our Facebook page more active, the media generally picks up off of that. Uh, because we've been real idle on, on, on our Facebook page. It was on purpose, because we didn't want to let anybody know that we were doing it for media attention. That's not what we serve for. But, I have to be cognizant of the fact that people pay attention to those things. And it lets people know where we're at and what we're doing, and encourages. So, we gotta pay it forward and let people know that those things are, are there. So, we are gonna be more present there. Um, Deja, who does our, our, my PIO for me, um, she will be more active into those things and, and, uh, we will, we're, we're here and we want to let people know that we are here. That way, we can get more, encourage more people to go out and do more things, not just us. You know, we want to do it together. So, I thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, G.
I think all that deserves.
Yeah, a lot of great feedback on Facebook about, um, this event. Not, nothing but wonderful comments. People were just blown away by this.
You know, and, and I had some texts while I was sitting here during the meeting, and it was my officers saying that, that, that this was the highlight of, you know, we see so much bad on any course of, you know, we, we know the crime that we've dealt with over the, over this past year and the years before, and it's time when you see the smiles. When you see the, the hearts of people, what our community really is. So, it's an opportunity for my department to see that, my officers to see that. So, it was a big thing.
Yeah.
It really was. Thank you. All right, councilman's remarks. Uh, Councilman Marcott, I'll start on your end.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to send my condolences to the Simmons family of Generec. Uh, they lost three of their kids at one time. I know that their kids have ties here in New Iberia, and that's just a tragic event for anyone to have to go through, especially around the holidays. Also, I want to say happy birthday to my husband. He's twenty-five today. Just kidding. Forty-seven. And then, uh, I want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas. I hope y'all have a, a safe and beautiful holiday with your family. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor and Councilman, the community was lit last weekend. Uh, we also had a toy drive, um, at Zion Hill Christian Fellowship, man. And when I walked in the church, man, uh, I promise you, they had three hundred kids in there. And Pastor Sofus, when we was planning, he was saying, man, I'm telling y'all, y'all better be ready. And I was like, no, it's too short notice. It was like three weeks off where we started planning. But I want, it was awesome, man, and we was able to touch every kid. Hype Menville Grubs and Dalbo, your name was all over this weekend, your last name. Um, Zion Hill Christian Fellowship, uh, my friend Ryan Romero at Cool Scene, it was his idea, he brought it on to me, myself, man, it was awesome. You know, I'm, I'm gonna let Dee to share, because she was there, I couldn't make everything. Uh, but it was lit in the community, man. I just, I, I pray that people, you know, uh, have a safe holiday season, uh, be careful on the road, you know, uh, things always happen, seem to be tragic over the holidays, and I think a lot of it is because we rushing. We rushing to get to the next big thing. You know, slow down, have fun, enjoy the holiday season and the holiday spirit, man. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Very nice to see Westgate in here, coaches, the players. It's a very, very big thing y'all accomplished. Hope it happens again, but boy, it comes far in between. And everybody have a very, very safe Christmas. Ms. Marcott, you're right about the three people we lost, three kids tragically on the highway. So, none of us want to ever lose anybody, but much less three in a family, young kids. So, um, y'all be safe out there.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I don't want to forget nobody.
Okay.
Barcheck chiropractor and Marcus Bryant as well. Marcus Bryant, attorney, uh, at, at law, they helped out as well.
Thank you.
So, just, uh, just, just to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and, uh, you know, just to reflect back, this is our last meeting for twenty-one. All of us, most of us are, first, some of us our first year, and if you, if we look back, I'm, I'm extremely excited on the accomplishments of this council. And if you, if we look back, I'm, I'm extremely excited on the accomplishments this council has made and the willingness to work together and the things we've done for community and, I mean, the sky's the limit moving forward and we have a bright, bright future, not only administrative, but from a council's perspective and, uh, uh, just everybody have a Happy New Year and we'll see you again in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I also want to wish everybody a joyous holiday season and be safe. And I don't want anybody to forget that COVID is alive and well and extremely contagious, um, the new strand. So just keep that in mind. If you haven't gotten your booster, get your booster. If you haven't gotten your, your initial shots, get those, uh, because we need to protect ourselves and others um, from the spread of this disease. That's the only way we gonna get it under control. And, um, also wear your mask, social distance, um, because this strand is very, very contagious. So just be safe during this holiday season.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to, as everyone else said, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Um, I really hope we all have this time to really kind of spend some time with our families and really enjoy it. Um, there's gonna be a gumbo giveaway on the corner of Twenty Auburn and Ann Street on Thursday, the twenty-third at twelve o'clock. So if you want some gumbo, please, it's gonna be drive-through. We're gonna be handing out gumbo to feed the community. Um, I also want to remind everybody that your, your city and parish taxes are due December thirty-first. Please, please, please pay those taxes so that you don't incur a fee. And we definitely don't want to put your property on civic source and have it auctioned off because you didn't pay your taxes. So please make that a priority over everything else. Um, and then, uh, just to kind of mention, uh, I want to thank Mr. Russell, Bill Russell, who, he got a bunch of us together, um, organizations to feed the community last Saturday. So we were out there feeding the community and, and then obviously we had a big toy giveaway. There was also a live nativity that was done on Hopkins Street and it was absolutely beautiful. So it was a, a great time had by all. I mean, it was just really wonderful. I'm glad I was, had, had an opportunity to be a part of it. And, uh, and that's it for me. Have a Happy New Year as well as a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Dustin?
Yeah, uh, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I want to thank Mr. Bruce for giving me a call, let me know to wear red. Kind of went a little bit, I found it in the closet, I know I wore it last term, I figured I need to dig it back out. Uh, but I, I want to diddle with Ricky on, uh, this council. I mean, this, this first year is going by extremely quick. And I realize that the past four years have gone by extremely quick. So, um, but I want to, you know, compliment everyone up here. We all working to do the right thing for this community and, uh, we can keep it going, see y'all in twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you all. I gave most of my time to the chief, but I do need to tell everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And at this time of the year, I always reflect and I'm blessed. I got a great council. We have come together like I knew we would. Uh, the people that returned from the last council, I had a great council last time. Y'all have just contributed more and more. And to our new people, that new energy and, and different insight is, is welcome and is a lot of fun and has brought a new level, I think, to this, uh, that, you know, it's, it's, it's just getting better. So I thank every one of you and I look forward to what we're gonna do next year. And let me tell you, uh, if, with the amount of money that we have, with the amount of steps we've already taken, with the plan we approved tonight as the final plan, with the things we got going, if we mess this up, shame on us because we really have a real opportunity to continue to change this community. What I see the police department doing, what I see our other departments who are working hard, the new things and challenges we are bringing to other departments. You know, Parks and Recs is growing at a rate that it never has. Uh, we keep bringing businesses, the permit office is working harder, you know? We pass, uh, and, and crack down and I want to continue that on our ordinances and on our compliance issues. You know, we have money, but, you know, we are, people are working, you know, our ci- our city prosecutor, you know, things are happening here and more people are involved in what we're doing than ever before throughout all of the city government. We have over two hundred and fifty employees and directly as a result of my administration and the day-to-day, but of you as well, the amount of things we're putting in place, we loading the cart up. Uh, I like it. I think it's, it's, it's the right thing to do, but, you know, uh, thank God we have really good people with us onboard as, as employees because we are, we are asking a lot. We are pushing and pushing, but that's what we should be doing. We all represent, you know, that thirty thousand people that put us in office. Uh, but I think they getting their money's worth, uh, and I think this next year is really, I, I'm excited to go into it. And, uh, I thank every one of you. This has been a blast and it's only gonna get better. So with that, our last motion to adjourn. Motion.
Motion.